All right, as you were just notified by the Zoom hearing, we are recording this hearing. This is Zing Imaging LLC, docket number two four dash three two seven one four dash C O N. The applicants, Zing Imaging LLC, the applicants in this matter seek us your certificate of need for the establishment of a healthcare facility pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, section nineteen A dash six thirty eight, paren small A, paren ten. Specifically, Zing Imaging seeks to acquire two PET CT scanners, PET slash CT scanners and one specked, S P E C T slash C T for a new research facility. Throughout this proceeding, I will be interchangeably referring to Zing Imaging LLC as Zing or Zing Imaging for brevity purposes. Today is August twenty second, twenty twenty four. My name is Alicia Novy. Dr. G J S Gifford, the Commissioner of the Office of Health Strategy, designated me to serve as the Hearing Officer for this matter, to rule on all motions and recommend findings of facts and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Public Act twenty one dash two, as amended by Public Act twenty two dash three, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of, excuse me, by means of an electronic meeting. Or sorry, by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. I'm going to add to that. If it's your first time speaking, please spell your last name for the court reporter as well. We ask that all members of the public mute their device and that they are using, that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. The public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, sections nineteen A dash six thirty nine A, paren E. And as such, this here, as such, this matter constitutes a contested case under the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act and will be conducted in accordance therewith. The Office of Health Strategy staff is here to assist me in gathering facts related to the application. I will be asking the applicant witnesses questions. I'm going to ask each staff person assisting today with questions, or assisting today with questions, to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name and O H S title.
Good morning. Steven Lazarus, L A Z A R U S, and I am the Certificate of Need Program Supervisor.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Mariano, M A R I A N O, and I'm a Certificate of Need Planning Analyst.
Thank you. Also present is Fay Fentes, a staff member for our agency, who is assisting with hearing logistics and will be, will also gather names for public comment. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public and our staff. Our priority is that the integrity and transparency of this process, accordingly decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be available on the O H S website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our Certificate of Need portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategies C O N webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with section nineteen A dash six thirty nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom hopefully notified you before I began this hearing, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the hearing. The C O N portal contains the pre-hearing table of record. In this case, at this time, as of its filing on Tuesday, exhibits are, exhibits are identified in the table, and I believe I have mistaken my own thing that they are A through T. Though there are some others that I will get to, the applicant is hereby notice that I am taking administrative notice of the following documents. The statewide facilities and services plan, statewide services inventory, O H S acute care hospital discharge data, and the all payer claims database claims data. I understand I may also take administrative notice of the hospital reporting system, H R S financial and utilization data, and also prior O H S decisions, agrees settlements and determinations that may be relevant in this matter. Counsel for the applicants, can you please identify yourself for the record? Ms. Attorney.
Yeah, sorry, I was having trouble. I've got a touchy mouse this morning. Attorney Vincenzo Carnante from Shipman and Goodwin.
Good morning. Patrick Fahey, also from Shipman and Goodwin.
Very much. Attorney Carnante, will you be doing the questioning or will Mr. Fahey?
I will.
Okay, great. All right, counsel for the intervenor in Vicro LLC, can you please identify yourselves for the record?
Good morning. My name is Ed Fishman. That's F I S H M A N, with a law firm of Hoagie Levels and representing in Vicro.
Thank you. And is your co-counsel on?
Yes, good, good, good morning, Hearing Officer Novy. This is Ronald Silverman from Hogan Levels as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, attorney Carnante, are there any objections to the exhibits listed in the table of record or the notice documents?
No.
Okay, all identified and marked exhibits are entered as full. In addition to those exhibits listed in the table, there was a, a letter of support which was, which was uploaded to the portal yesterday. Attorney Carnante, do you have any issues with that letter of support?
I do not, no.
Okay, so at this time, we will mark that as exhibit U, and we will enter that as well as a full exhibit. Okay, attorney Carnante, do you have any additional exhibits you would like to enter at this time? All right, we'll proceed with the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I'd like to advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposal and for the, and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, the completeness letters and the prefiled testimony, and I will do so many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. All participants shall mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try and shut down the recording, shut down the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video that is not disabled will be accessible to all participants in this hearing. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in order established by O H S during the registration process. However, I may call, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or O H S staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. Registration for a public comment will take place at eleven A M and is scheduled to start at one P M. If the technical portion of this hearing is not completed by one P M, public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses must be available after the public comment, as O H S may have follow-up questions based on public comments. I will state that we will allow people who are attending this meeting virtually to sign up via the chat function with our O H S staff member, Ms. Fentes. She will take your name and allow you to, she will take your name and allow, sorry about that, and take your name and put you on the list in order of registration. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues we need to address before we start, Attorney Carnante?
Not from my end, Hearing Officer Novy.
All right, Attorney Fishman.
No, we just like to state for the record that the prefiled testimony that was submitted by the applicant was not actually submitted by someone who appears to be an employee officer director of the applicant. And so we think it's very relevant to today's hearing to understand what, if any, affiliation the applicant's witness has with the applicant. I'd just like to state that on the record.
Okay, I, I will take that. I do allow the applicant to bring the witnesses they feel are necessary to put on, and the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act allows them to bring who they need to put on their case. So I am going to allow them to ask questions of their witnesses. I will just remind everybody that this is a hearing about a C O N. We are going to stick fairly tightly to the twelve outlined areas that I am to make a decision on, and those are listed in nineteen A dash six thirty nine. If you have any questions about what a, about where our questions will come from and what they will look like, I will be tightly adhering to those boundaries and questioning, okay? All right, applicant, is there, or sorry, I bet the part I shouldn't, is there an opening statement for Attorney Carnante?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and O H S staff. As you already stated, today's hearing is in regards to the applicant's proposal to acquire three cameras, two PET CTs and one spec CT. And the key thing that we, I ask O H S respectfully, of course, is to focus on and keep in mind today is that this proposal before you is about one thing, and that one thing is research and the benefits of and the needs for said research. What are we researching? Initially, these three cameras will be used for research associated with discovering cures, treatments, drugs, therapies, et cetera, for Parkinson's disease and Alzheimer's disease. And as you will hear in more detail today from Dr. Merrick and other witnesses today, we are at a critical and pivotal point in the fight against these devastating diseases. And the research plan to be performed on these cameras will hopefully lead to new medications, therapies and treatments. The C O N statutes and application documents focus on healthcare facilities, which, as O H S is well aware, is a defined term under the C O N law, particularly Connecticut General Statutes nineteen A dash six thirty subsection ten. Zing Imaging is neither a healthcare facility nor does it provide healthcare services. Nevertheless, Zing Imaging believes it satisfies the guidelines, principles and criteria set forth in Connecticut General Statutes nineteen A dash six thirty nine and O H S's two thousand twenty four statewide healthcare facilities and services plan when such guidelines, principles and/or criteria apply to Zing Imaging and/or its proposal. Of course, we will be happy to answer any and all questions today from O H S on these issues. And before I forget, I would like O H S to take administrative notice of the following. In chapter five, Imaging and New Technology of O H S's two thousand twenty four statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, there is a subsection titled Other Factors for Consideration, and it states, quote, "The office may also take the following criteria into consideration during its review of an application, the use of the PET or PET CT scanner for clinical research," end quote. This reflects O H S's support and the importance of research initiatives and its understanding of how the criteria, how other criteria must be considered in a typical C O N situation such as this. And as a reminder to all, these cameras will be one hundred percent and exclusively used only for research purposes. As you know, Invicro is participating in today's hearing as an intervenor. As noted and stated in Ms. Ferriolo's, I hopefully I'm pronouncing her name correctly, in her own prefiled testimony on page four specifically, she states earlier this year, Invicro was sold, quote, "to an affiliate of Cap Best Partners L L P, a global private equity firm with over ten billion in funds under management," end quote. That's billions with a B. As I'm sure O H S can tell, Invicro's interest here, as with almost all private equity firms, their primary interest is protecting and preserving their own financial interests. I would venture to guess that they wouldn't be here today if otherwise. For example, and as stated in Invicro's own words on page fifteen of the intervenor's petition, their main reason for their petition is that, quote, "The approval of Zing's application would have an adverse impact on the imaging facility being operated in New Haven today by Invicro," end quote. What Invicro will try to do today is to make it about them and try to demonstrate that there is no need for this proposal simply because they exist. But as you will learn this morning, Invicro will not be providing the crucial imaging services that are the subject of this application as their contract to do so has been in fact terminated by a third party. It's curious that they don't reveal that in the course of their petition. But their withholding of that information is not very important. What I want to be very clear about today is that our application, our application is not about Invicro or anyone else for that matter. We are not competing against Invicro. We did not raise over fifty million dollars to compete against Invicro, which again is owned by a ten billion dollar company. We are researchers and our only adversaries, and the only ones we, Zing Imaging, are fighting against are these awful and debilitating diseases known as Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's disease and cancer. Supporting that research provides the clear public need for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Carnante. I just want to clear up one thing before we go any further. I did not mention exhibits B and W, which is the, was the letter of support, I incorrectly identified exhibit T, or sorry, exhibit U as the letter of support. That's the table of record. So I'd like to enter in exhibits B and W, which are the, which are the, I'm going to say this wrong, Sentonics Letter of Support and the Order Granting Pro-Hoc V J Application. Attorney Carnante, do you have any objections to those going in as full exhibits?
I do not, Hearing Officer Novy.
Thank you. Okay, this time we'll go back to the technical portion. Attorney Carnante, can you please identify all individuals by name and title who are going to testify on behalf of the application? And then ask them to turn their cameras on as you, as you announce them.
Sure. Should I just give you all the names now?
Sure.
Of potential people that may testify today or answer O H S questions?
Just who's offering testimony. We're going to go into the testimony portion. I'm going to swear the people who will give testimony in the first portion and right now, and we can swear on others as they, as they come up to answer questions later.
Sure, I, I assume that the only people that I would be doing direct testimony were the, was Dr. Merrick, the person I filed prefiled testimony for. If you would like, we, I could also ask direct questions of other witnesses. If that's something you prefer, otherwise we can, we can save that for O H S questions, whatever you prefer.
We'll save that for O H S questions. Let's, is Dr. Merrick with you in the room or is he on?
Oh, no, no, he's, he's on, he's on the, he's on, well, I don't see him right now on my screen, but he should be on the, he should be on the call on the video conference. He's not in the room. So Doc, Dr. Merrick, are you there? Can you show up on video, please?
Yes, I am here. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today. Hopefully you can see and hear me.
We, we can, Dr. Merrick. Thank you.
Hello, hello, Dr. Merrick. I'm going to, and what, Dr. Merrick's first name, please?
Ken.
All right, all right, Dr. Merrick, if you could please raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you in now. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that, that the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence you shall give have or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and put your hand down. And if you could please spell your last name for the record.
M A R E K.
All right, thank you. All right, I want to remind you that when giving testimony, please make sure to state your full name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted on the record prior to testifying today. The applicant may now proceed with their testimony.
Thank you. So again, my name is Kenneth, Ken Merrick, M A R E K. The pleasure to be here today. I'm always delighted to be able to talk about where we are in the effort to develop new research into, for neurodegenerative diseases. So I am a neurologist and a neuroscientist. Worked in the last thirty five years as both a clinician and with a, with a focus on research in disorders like Alzheimer's disease and Parkinson's disease, with a goal to really understand better ways to identify and these disorders, to treat them, and ultimately to find a time to prevent these diseases. Currently, I am the president and senior scientist of the Institute for Neurodegenerative Disorders, which I will refer to as I N D. It is a not-for-profit research institute which was founded by myself and another doctor, Dr. John Seibel in two thousand and one in, in Connecticut. You know, as I think many people may be aware, there are today about seven million individuals with Alzheimer's disease in the U S, about one to one and a half million with Parkinson's disease. That sort of translates to about seventy six thousand people in the state of Connecticut with Alzheimer's disease, about twelve thousand with Parkinson's disease. Sadly, these numbers are rapidly rising. They're probably substantial underestimates. As someone who has provided care to these individuals and their families, as well as conducted research in this area for thirty five years, the need for continued research in these areas is, is overwhelming. And it's also important to keep in mind that these disorders are progressive disorders. And so for the people with these disorders, for their families, for people who think they might have these disorders, the clock is ticking. So we need to be very efficient, or as efficient as we can be in developing and research that will be helpful, you know, with the goal, the ultimate goal being to identify new treatments that are effective for these disorders. So what is really exciting and sort of hopeful is that really over the past two or three years, we have really been in, in, seen an, really a marked acceleration in the pace of research, largely because our understanding of the biology of disease, of how the disease progresses has, has, has really increased dramatically. As an old guy who's been in the business for thirty five years, it's been very gratifying. And we are really at, at a, at a point where we have real hope that a real push in research will really begin to do for neurodegenerative diseases, what's been done over the past twenty years for cancer, where we have new therapies and a, and a new strategy for how to manage these disorders. So brain imaging has been a key to some of this acceleration in research. Probably the best example of that is the recent, you know, development of, of new therapies for Alzheimer's disease, which have now been approved by the FDA. And really for these disorders, brain imaging has been a key to, a key enabler of that research. And, and really, so today, I'm really delighted to have an opportunity to speak in support of Zing Imaging's con application to really, to enable them to continue our, this research effort. I think Zing Imaging is a new, it's a vibrant forward-thinking company that is entirely focused on this research. While it is a new company, the participants, the principals in Zing Imaging are well-known to me and well-known to the research community. They have decades of experience. They have a track record of success in developing imaging tools that can be helpful in research in neurodegenerous diseases. In fact, they were part of the team that helped to develop the imaging advances that were led to the new therapies in Alzheimer's disease I mentioned a moment ago. I personally have worked with many of them, and you know, again, I, I, I think that this is really an enormous opportunity for broadening research in, in these disorders. Now, my role is that I lead a, this not-for-profit research company, institute called I N D. I N D, founded in two thousand and one, sole purpose is to develop new therapies for neurodegenerous diseases. I, I would like to just take a moment, because it's relevant, I think, to explain the relationships between or clarify the relationship between I N D and the Michael J. Fox Foundation and Invicro and Zing Imaging. I, I N D was founded by myself and John Seibel in two thousand and one. At the same time, we founded a for-profit research company called Molecular Neuimaging. I N D and Molecular Neuimaging collaborated for about fifteen years until two thousand and sixteen, when molecular neuroimaging was purchased by Invicro. Invicro was in turn purchased by Conica Minolta in two thousand and seventeen. You know, I, I N D was not part of that transaction. I N D is a separate research institute, has its own board. It was, it, it was, it was not part of any of these transactions and it remained an independent research entity. I N D and myself personally have had a strong relationship with the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Disease Research in New York City. In two, in two thousand and ten, I N D was asked to lead a sort of landmark study developed by the Michael J. Fox Foundation called the Parkinson Progression Marker Initiative, P P M I. And that study has grown and developed remarkably over the last thirteen, fourteen years and is a broad international study that involves literally hundreds of investigators. It involves fifty one clinical sites worldwide, and it is entirely led by I N D. That is, that is the responsibility delegated to us and given to us by the Michael J. Fox Foundation. Among those fifty one sites, I N D identified what we called a premier site. That was our own site. And our own site was designed to be a kind of a site that we could, we could utilize to test out new ideas to incre- make sure that we could, you know, manage to and conduct the, the research as we had intended. And that site was initially located through our collaboration at Molecular Neuimaging. But when, but when Invicro purchased Molecular Neuimaging, that site was then located at Invicro. The, the relationship, it was that I N D was the responsible for all of the scientific activities to determine what the site would do, just as they are responsible for these other sites, fifty one, fifty sites around the world. But that the group at Invicro was responsible for enrolling individuals and for operationalizing, for conducting the clinical trial, just as they might for any other pharmaceutical-sponsored study. We have, we, this, this, this relationship was, went well for a number of years. But over the last two to three to five years, we have seen a sort of marked deterioration of the performance and the reliability of Invicro in conducting this research. This really, in, in, in my view, is largely due to the fact that during this period, Invicro lost most of their, almost their entire scientific leadership in most of the areas of research, which were relevant to what, to this relationship required. They lost their individuals in data science, in image analysis, in, in chemistry. And as, and, and I think that all of this, I think, created a situation in which Invicro was really unable to reliably provide the, the research activities that were asked of them. In addition, we have seen over the past couple of years, dramatic turnover at the clinic, which also has contributed to our concerns about the research activities. Now, in my original testimony to the, our written testimony I submitted, I chose not really to discuss the difficulties at Invicro, because frankly, I think it's sort of irrelevant, what really we're talking about. What really we're talking about is Zing Imaging. But given the testimony of Ms. Fariolo, I need to correct some, many inaccuracies and misinformation in that, in that testimony. The fact is, we have discussed numerous times with Invicro, in fact, with Ms. Fariolo, the, the many deficiencies that have occurred over the years with Invicro. These are large and small. I, I can, I can list them all. We can provide the date, the email supporting all this. But just as examples, we have had situations where Invicro has been unable to enroll individuals for a period of time, unable to conduct the research for a period of time, you know, and, and always because of a lack of resources. You know, about a year ago, perhaps the kind of coup de grace was when Invicro was unable to analyze images for several months because of a lack of resources. We only uncovered that ourselves. They didn't let us know about this. And so this created a, a, a serious problem for the PPMI study, which is dependent on providing information in a timely manner to the research community. So that our goal is to provide information within a month of when it is acquired to the research community in an open source manner. In fact, within PPMI, there have been over twenty-eight million downloads of data over the years. And not having the data is a very, is a very serious problem for us. Given all of this, of these difficulties, we have been seeking to relocate the clinic. This is, this has been ongoing for, for, for many months, for years, a couple of years at least. And, you know, we have many options. One option was for us to just go ahead and, and create an IND clinic and run it ourselves. Another option was to collaborate with groups in New Haven, like Yale University or other clinical trial groups. None of these were attractive to us because we, we, they, they didn't. It's, it would have been challenging for us to sort of expand the research activities that we would like to do. Zing Imaging has, you know, you know, recently decided to locate a facility in New Haven. And this has really been a sort of a, a huge opportunity for us at IND. This enabled us to take advantage of that facility to cite a clinic there, but with all of the benefits that we seek. We would like to be able to expand our research. We would like to be able to work collaboratively to test new ideas and new with, with, that, that can further our research activities. And moreover, Zing is completely committed to expanding their research in, in neuromaging. So these two groups really fit together extremely well. We are committed to, now to continuing to work with Zing. We, we have, within the PPMI project, imaging is a key component. It's not the, it's not the only component, but it's a key component. We expect that we will take advantage of Zing's imaging facilities and their cameras in two ways. One is that we will be continuing the ongoing collection of data using SPECT imaging, which has been a part of PPMI since it began. These data are, you know, crucial for us to continue in a very timely manner. We collect these data longitudinally and we don't want to miss out in time points that will be very, very informative. The second way is to really expand our research using PET imaging. PET, PET imaging in Parkinson's disease has now become much more, much more of a, a useful tool. And likely in the near future, by developing a PET imaging tracer for a protein that is affected in Parkinson's disease called synuclein, could become very widespread use, much as amyloid imaging is of widespread use for Alzheimer's disease. Zing Imaging is planning to install a new camera. It's called the NeuroExplorer Camera. The NeuroExplorer Camera is a very substantial increase in technology. It has much better sensitivity to see the imaging signal. And we believe this will really be an enormous boost to research as well. So this is a really exciting moment from our perspective, from the IND perspective, where we have identified a location where we can continue our research, where we can expand our research and do so in a reliable way and have confidence that the research will move forward in, in a very timely manner. We look forward to working with Zing. And again, we are hopeful that the OHS will agree to allow them to acquire these cameras and utilize them. The research effort is, I mean, there, there is, is, you know, i- i- as I say, is overwhelming. It's a really good moment for when we can make a difference and this will really make a difference. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Merrick, if I could ask you to state on the record that you adopt your previously submitted prefiled testimony?
I do adopt my previously submitted testimony.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to make a general statement again. I know that there are some, there are other issues between the intervenor and our applicant, however, we are here. And, you know, that there is some explanation that is needed, but I'm going to ask that, you know, the, that the applicants speak more to the acquisition of imaging equipment. That is what we are here for today in the CON hearing. So with that in mind, we are going to allow cross-examination by the intervenor in Vico. But I'm going to ask that you limit your questions to nineteen A dash six thirty-nine criteria. Those would be one through twelve that we, that we will be looking at in the CON process. If there's a question that is outside that, I may, that I will, you know, we may, we may have a discussion about that question. Okay, Attorney Fishman?
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novy.
Can I rudely interrupt? Sorry.
Yes.
I just want to make sure. Hearing Officer Novy, I know that was his prefiled testimony. And were you just allowing Attorney Fishman to do cross or their opening statement?
He's going to do cross of yours and then you will get a chance after him to ask questions. At which point, once you are done with your section, we will allow the, the intervenor will, will go to the intervenor. He'll do a brief opening statement. His, his, his witness will give testimony. You will cross-examine limited to nineteen A dash six thirty-nine. Then he will allow to, to redirect.
Thank you, Hearing. I get all of that. I just didn't know whether I would start with direct questioning of Dr. Merrick first before.
No, we're going to allow him to go first and then you will have direct after he cross-examines.
Absolutely, that's fine. Attorney Fishman, my apologies. I apologize for the interruption.
No problem at all.
Dr. Merrick, good morning. My name is Ed Fishman. I'm an attorney with the Law Firm of Hogan Levels here representing Invicro. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you also for the work that you're doing on these various studies. We're, we're not here to question any of that. I do want to start by asking you, are you an employee of Zing Imaging?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Are you an officer or director of Zing Imaging?
No, I'm not.
Do you have any affiliation with Zing Imaging?
Yes, I do. I, I'm a consultant, a strategic consultant to Zing Imaging. And I have an ownership in Zing Imaging, a small ownership in Zing Imaging.
As a strategic consultant, do you receive compensation?
I do.
Or expect to receive compensation?
I do, yes.
Okay. How much is that compensation?
Uh, the, I'm compensated at, on an hourly basis. And it's six hundred dollars an hour.
Hearing Officer Novy, can I just, again, I'm apologizing.
You can, you can object it when you need to.
Okay, is, is this, can, can we explain how this is relevant?
I, I was thinking that myself.
Happy to address that.
Which of the twelve criteria does this go to?
So Zing Imaging has the burden in this matter. It has the burden to demonstrate that its application meets each of the statutory principles and guidelines that the Office of Health Strategy must consider when evaluating Zing's application. Since we're talking about an evidentiary burden, as I stated at the outset, it doesn't appear that any employee, officer, or director of Zing submitted prefiled testimony or testimony in this proceeding. So I'm just pointing out that the issue, Dr. Merrick's affiliation with Zing is directly relevant to the evidentiary burden, to all twelve.
No, 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 no. I, I want you to tell me it goes to this one, because I can't take your word for it.
Sure.
And quote you. I need to look at one of those twelve and say, it goes here. And this actually goes to this. So I'm going to hold you guys tight, because otherwise we're going to go off into left field. So we're, we're staying tight to the twelve. Which of the twelve does the pay rate for a contractor go to?
So, so the issue is, again, the affiliation with the applicant. It's directly relevant to all twelve because of the applicant's evidentiary burden. And overall, we're talking about clear public need. So, you know, the, the issue is, is there a clear public need for this new facility and, and the purchase of these scanners? And so it is directly relevant, in our view, that there's no testimony and no evidence from Zing that's been submitted so far as prefiled testimony or as testimony in this proceeding. So it relates to the evidentiary burden that the applicant has.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm objecting again. He's, he's not responding to your question, Hearing Officer.
I'm going to, I'm going to end that, that line of questioning. I, I'm going to sustain your objection. Attorney Fishman, I'll give you some, some leeway on questions, but that, that we're, we're going to try and, just so that we don't go off onto a tangent, stick to the, to the, this is an acquisition of imaging equipment, CON. You know, he, it, it's good to know how he's affiliated with them, but we don't have, his pay rate is not, you know, he is a consultant for them. He is employed by them. The amount of pay he receives is not as, as important as the fact that he is actually a consultant and does have a contractual relationship with this company, so.
Well, we respect your decision. I just will point out, however, that in Zing's counsel's opening statement, they did make a reference to financial interests and emphasized that, in their view, this case was all about financial interests. And we, we agree that this case is all about Zing and, and IND's financial interest in replacing Invicro with Zing. But I'll move on to some additional questions for Dr. Merrick. Your, your counsel, Zing's counsel, in his, his opening statement, stated that Invicro's contract was terminated by IND. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it, it is an accurate statement. The, the, our MSA was terminated as of a couple of weeks ago. That's correct, yes. As, as part of that termination process, there is a ninety-day period in which we need to, you know, manage all of the activities that are required to close out the study. So we are now closing out that study.
Yeah, well, I don't believe the MSA was terminated. I believe that only specific statements of work were subject to a notice of termination that.
That's correct. The SOW was terminated, but SOW only with regard to, with, with the, the SOW that was, reflects the work that I discussed. That is, the clinical site, the imaging acquisition was, was terminated, yes.
Okay, so let me just state for the record, a very important distinction. The MSA itself was not terminated. Only specific statements of work, IND issued a notice of termination with respect to those statements of work.
The MSA has not yet been terminated. That's correct.
Okay, okay.
I, I would say that just the other parts of the MSA are not related to the, to the acquisition of imaging for, by, by Zing, as far as I know.
Isn't it your plan to terminate the work that Invicro is doing today and transfer that over to Zing?
I, I think that we are, you know, that, that I think depends a bit on what happens over the next period of time with Zing. As, as, just to be clear, I think maybe for the others in the room, there really, we're talking about two major types of effort that Invicro has been, has, has been asked to do. The first is what I was referred to in my testimony, which is related to the clinical site and the clinical activities, including imaging activities. The second is that Invicro has also been working as a, is what, what we would call a, a, a core imaging facility. And there too, there have been a number of issues that have given us concern. IND, again, is charged by the Michael J. Fox Foundation to determine what is the best location for our core imaging facility. That they have, again, lost many of the personnel within that group that make it, make it difficult for them to conduct that research. We will, I, you know, I think it's sort of not relevant, I think, to today's discussion as to whether we terminate those other, those other activities.
So you've mentioned Invicro losing personnel. How many former Invicro personnel has Zing hired?
I don't actually know the answer to that. So you would need to ask the, the Zing group that's on the call.
Do you have an approximate sense of, of how many employees Zing has hired from Invicro?
I, I actually don't know the answer to that. There, I know that, because I think Zing is very active. They've been hiring people, which is great. And I know some of them have been formerly at Invicro, some, many of them not. I, but I don't know the answer. Again, I'm not the person to answer that question.
Okay, but you've, you've, you've testified and, and made a point that Invicro has, has lost personnel.
That I do know, because we have been, you know, we, we have been interacting with Invicro as, and we have been told by Invicro that those people have left. And, you know, again, it, it had been told, not only have they left, but that those people, that they're leaving has created challenges for Invicro because they have not been replaced. So that is a big problem when you don't replace key scientific personnel at your site because you're no longer able to conduct the work that you were able to before.
But, but you know that some of those people, you may not know the exact number, but some of those people have left Invicro because they've joined Zing.
I know that some of those people have left Invicro and some of those people have joined Zing. I don't know that they left Invicro because they joined Zing. That's a separate issue. Again, you would need to ask the people at Zing this question, but I don't really know the answer.
Have you ever had a conversation with anyone at Invicro about joining Zing?
I'm going to object.
Yeah.
For Novy, this, I mean, we answered, it came up in Dr. Merrick's testimony. He answered the question. Now I have no idea where this is going. And you want to point to something, nineteen A six thirty-nine, that's great. And I'll, I'll shut up, but I'm objecting right now.
Yeah, I'm going to give Mr. Attorney Fishman, what criteria in nineteen A dash six thirty-nine does this go to? Because I feel like we are, again, drifting too far afield.
Okay, so, so it goes, you know, directly to several of the statutory criteria.
How many which ones?
Clear public need, unnecessary duplication. We, we haven't had a chance to talk about the, the legal framework. I was planning to do that in, in my opening statements. Our position is, this is a healthcare facility. If you look at the statute, it defines any entity that requires a certificate of need as a healthcare facility. So that may be.
How does any, any facility, so are they charging people?
But, but that's not the statutory definition.
No, 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 no. A healthcare facility would also have to provide services to Medicaid, Medicare patients. We look at paramex. Is this a facility that has a paramex?
So I don't know the answer to that question, but, but the statutory definition, we're happy to submit, post-file, first hearing briefs on this issue. So I don't know the answer to that question, but, but the statutory definition, we're happy to submit post-file, first hearing briefs on this issue. The statutory definition refers to any entity that needs a certificate of need, defines that as a healthcare facility. So our position is this is a healthcare facility and therefore there are several of the statutory principles and, and guidelines that apply. And we're happy to walk through that in our, our opening statements. Also happy to submit a post-hearing brief on that issue.
I'm going to ask both sides to submit briefs.
Hold on. Do we, do we, we need to submit post-hearing briefs on a definition that I have tattooed on my forehead? We're not a healthcare facility. We can read, we can all go to nineteen eight, six thirty, ten, subsection ten right now. We can put it on the screen. We are not a healthcare facility. Our CON is about acquisition of imaging equipment. If I personally wanted to buy an, an MRI scanner and put it in my backyard and use it as a playground toy, I would have to get a CON in this state. And I am not a healthcare facility. We are getting a CON today because it's, because we are acquiring imaging equipment. Uh, there's no need, no, this is another delay tactic. We do not need post-hearing issues or briefs on whether Zing Imaging is a healthcare facility. We do not require treatments.
So, so we respectfully disagree. Um, I believe there's a very strong statutory argument. If you look at nineteen eight, six thirty eight.
Okay, hold on both of you. I'm going to, um, let you know. I mean, we do make this determination ourselves. This, this CON is actually an acquisition of imaging equipment. That is the, how it has been uh, ter- uh, termed when it came in, um, six oh three designs, uh, defines healthcare facility types for OHS. This is not the establishment of a healthcare facility. This was not filed as a CON for the establishment of a healthcare facility. This was filed for the acquisition of imaging equipment. We're going to keep it tight. We're going to stay within the bounds. This is the acquisition of imaging equipment. Um, so we are going to keep this as an acquisition of imaging equipment hearing instead of a healthcare facility hearing. This is about their wanting to purchase spec CTs and, uh, and PET CT scanners and an additional camera to go with those. So let's keep it into that, into those definitions, uh, within the bounds of nineteen eight dash six thirty nine. I think that if you have questions that are relevant to those, we can go ahead and do that. Um, and, and I will point out that nineteen eight dash six thirty eight, number ten, current ten, acquisition of computed tomography scanners, magnetic resonance imaging scanners, positron emission tomography scanners, or a positon emission tomography slash computed tomography scanners by any person, physician, provider, or acute care general hospital, or children's hospital, except provided in a different subsection. Uh, a certificate of need unit, uh, days will be required. So you need a certificate of need for any of those devices. They are asking for these devices. Therefore, a certificate of need is required for those devices. So we're going to keep it within those bounds. We're talking about devices. We're talking about they're wanting to acquire those devices, not whether or not they're a healthcare facility.
So, so, so we respectfully still disagree. We would reserve the right to file a post-hearing brief on this issue. Because I will point out, we, we agree that this con application is about the acquisition of the CTP PET scanners. We, we agree with what you just said. However, if you look at the definition of a healthcare facility in six thirty, in subsection I, it refers to any other facility requiring a certificate of need. Our position is that this would be a facility requiring a certificate of need. Therefore, it's a healthcare facility. Otherwise, how is this, you have the, the state plan, the statewide plan on healthcare facilities and services, OHS's jurisdiction? I mean, all those are tied to the fact that this is effectively a healthcare facility. We're not saying they're seeking acqui- uh, authority to establish a healthcare facility, but we believe those statutory factors that refer to healthcare facilities are relevant in this proceeding.
Okay, Mr. Fishman, if this was a health, the establishment of a new healthcare facility, it would have been filed under exception one, which is literally the establishment of a new healthcare facility. This was filed under ten.
Okay.
Seeking the acquisition. We are, we are sticking with ten. It has been correctly demonstrated by our, our certificate of need group when this application came in. It was filed correctly. That's what they're looking for. This is not filed as a number one establishment of a new healthcare facility. It is a ten, uh, acquisition of computer tomography scanners. Um, so we are going to go with ten. If you would like to see the brief, you're welcome to. We can determine whether or not that is appropriate at the time, but we are, we have gone far enough afield, um, to bring it back to the, the, uh, the statutes nineteen eight dash six thirty nine. Let's stick with those. Um, for acquisition of equipment. And I, I've stated this a lot. This is about the acquisition of scanning equipment. Let's talk about that.
Sure. And, and, and again, we respectfully disagree, but we will, uh, you know, continue with the cross-examination of Dr. Merrick. Uh, I, I will in my opening statement sort of, you know, point out how we, we do believe that the statutory criteria are, are relevant to, to this matter. And that many of the questions and all the questions that I'm asking, we believe are, are relevant to, uh, to this proceeding today. Let me, let me ask Dr. Merrick in terms of, um, I'd like to, I'd like to refer you to the letter of support, Dr. Merrick, that you filed with Jing's application. Are you familiar with that letter?
Yes, sir. Yes, I am.
Okay. In that letter, you stated Jing has developed a state-of-the-art facility uh, for clinical imaging research. Is that an accurate statement?
Uh, yes, I think it is. Uh, they, they have developed it. It is being built out as we speak. It is mostly built, as it turns out. We are prepared to, uh, I think the clinics, the clinic facility is, is entirely ready, uh, is built out and, and is available to us. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, uh, they have developed, uh, uh, what I think is a, is a state-of-the-art facility. Yeah. Uh, it will be, uh, you know, I think they, obviously they don't have the cameras because they need to get the CON to get the cameras. Uh, but that's, that's, uh, I, I think I would characterize it that way.
So, so you just stated that, um, obviously Jing has not purchased, uh, the, the cameras. Um, I'd like to ask you about the specific cameras that, that Jing is seeking to purchase. Um, you mentioned this Neuro Explorer. That, that costs about roughly three million dollars. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I, you know, again, it is, I, I am not the right person to discuss the cost of the camera, but I, I, I don't know if you, that, that, I think it's in that range. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you know if Jing has the, the capital available to purchase that camera?
Again, I think this would be a better asked of the Zing team. Uh, my understanding is that they are, uh, intending to purchase these cameras with, uh, with, with the capital, but I would, I think they would be much better. Uh, this would be much better asked of, of those individuals. Uh, yes.
Do you know if Zing has contracts that, uh, are in place today to purchase those cameras?
Again, I would say that, uh, I don't have access to the contracts that, that Zing has or doesn't have, except for the one that they have with, uh, with IND, uh, which does exist. Uh, so that's, uh, you know, I, I will say that, uh, while I don't know whether they have the cameras, it's been my, uh, there's been enormous excitement among the research community. Uh, as, as it has become known that the Neuro Explorer will be purchased. Uh, I of course have had many, had many contacts with groups in the research. Uh, and they are lining up to use the Neuro Explorer.
You testified today that, that Jing decided to locate its facility in New Haven. Why was that?
Again, I think you're going to need to ask the people from Zing this question. Uh, I, I would venture to say that, um, that, uh, they have longstanding ties to the New Haven area. Uh, that, uh, this is, uh, one possibility, but uh, I would, I would, I would really need, you know, again, you're, you know, I, I, you're going to need to ask the, the individuals at, at Zing these questions to get, uh, uh, more complete answers. I'm sure they'd be willing to, to tell you the information.
Okay. But, but you are an, an owner of Jing and, and actually a consultant to Jing. Is?
I have a small, uh, ownership. Uh, I have no, uh, uh, role in decision-making with regard to, uh, Zing's activities, uh, uh, such as where they're located. I'm, I don't serve on the board or have any, any of those uh, of this, other than to provide consultant information. I'm sure you're aware that consultants are sometimes, uh, uh, their advice is sometimes taken and sometimes ignored.
In your prefiled testimony, you described IND as a premier site. Is that correct?
No, I think what I suggested was that, uh, IND, the IND site in New Haven was designed to be a premier site. Yes. And by premier site, I mean, again, as I, as I mentioned earlier, uh, IND has the responsibility to oversee fifty-one sites around the world. Uh, it's very hopeful from it, for our, from our research activities to be able to have our own site so that we can test out, test out issues. Uh, so that we can un- understand what the, what, what issues are easy or what site, what sites might have problems doing. And so we can, uh, explore, uh, what are called additional, uh, activities, additional studies so that we can, uh, test them out at our, at our own site before bringing them to the other sites. So that's, that's, that's right. That's the goal of the IND site. Uh, it was in fact, uh, realized for some years, but as I mentioned, the past uh, two to three, four years, that really has not been possible for us uh, in the same way at, uh, InVicro. It's just not been uh, as a real, uh, uh, able to continue, uh, manage that research, those research activities.
But, but the the, the activities that, that occur at that site, they're not conducted by IND. They're conducted by InVicro, correct?
In, in any clinical trial, uh, the way it works is that there is a group that has the, as that, that develops the protocol, that develops all of the scientific uh, goals, that oversees the site, uh, that, uh, and then they're, the, they're, the clinical uh, enrollment, the operational activities are conducted by a clinical site. That was contracted to InVicro. That's correct.
And have you, have you sought to, um, let, let me rephrase the question. The, the, the notice of termination that IND issued to InVicro on certain SOWs was based on termination for convenience, right? Is that correct?
Yes, it was based on, we, 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 uh, sought to, we chose to take advantage of the fact that we could, as could InVicro, terminate for any reason, uh, within ninety days. That's correct.
Okay. And you did not seek to terminate those SOWs for any alleged breach of InVicro's contractual obligations?
That's correct. I mean, I think that, that, that we did not seek to, to, uh, to, um, uh, I, identify a breach in contractual obligations, but I would point out that there is a wide gulf between breach of contractual obligations and ability to do quality research. Uh, and, uh, you know, you can not breach your contractual obligations, but you can be unable to do quality research, and that is the case.
Has Jing actually operated any imaging facilities in the U.S.?
No, no, they are not. They are developing this as a new facility. But as I mentioned, uh, the group at Zing has tremendous experience in operating imaging facilities around the world. Uh, for decades. So I, I, and I personally have a great deal of confidence in their capabilities.
Do you know if Jing has obtained a Nuclear Regulatory Commission license for its proposed facility?
You know, again, uh, I would, uh, I would ask you to speak to the, to group at Zing. I know that they, again, they're, they're, they, I, I, I would say that they are very, uh, experienced and I, I, I expect that they are uh, moving forward to get the appropriate licensures that they need. Uh, we, uh, we, we, uh, you know, I, I, but again, I would, I, exactly where the, at what stage that is, uh, if it's been completed, you'd need to ask them.
Would that license be required for you to transfer any of the existing imaging work over to Jing?
It would be required for them to conduct imaging research. That's correct.
Can you help us understand what the process would be to transfer the work that Jing is, that InVicro is doing today over to Jing?
Sure. That's, it's a very straightforward process, uh, happily, uh, because as, as I mentioned, most of the uh, uh, activities, uh, most of the sort of oversight activities and the, all of the data, uh, all of the, uh, information about the individuals who are participating is really, uh, is really owned by IND. We have that information already. So simply what we need to do, uh, is to direct individuals who would be seen, who, who would have been seen, uh, at InVicro, uh, to, uh, go for their next visit, uh, to be seen, uh, at the Zing facility. Uh, all of the, there are other responsibilities that we have as a clinical, uh, as a clinical, uh, a- entity in that we have to fulfill uh, our responsibilities to the regulatory authorities. So there is a, uh, institutional review board, is a central institutional review board uh, that, uh, guides us in doing this work. We would need to, of course, notify them, uh, explain that, that we are moving, uh, and, uh, modify the, uh, uh, the paperwork that they have. So it's a very straightforward, uh, just to be clear, this is not the first time in PPMI this has happened. Uh, a, a couple of years ago, a similar situation arose, uh, in a site in San Francisco where very similarly, it was originally a very good site, but they lost their scientific leadership. Uh, we, uh, ultimately closed down that site and moved the participants to a site nearby in, in San Francisco uh, that had the scientific leadership that was required. That site, this was done three, four years ago. Uh, it's now, that San Francisco site is now a very good site. Uh, we're very happy about this. Uh, it's not, you know, in a stu-, you know, PPMI is unusual and that is a study that has gone on for thirteen to fourteen years and intends to go on for at least another five years. Uh, most clinical studies go on for a year or two, but this is unusual. So it's not surprising that there are problems arise like this. We need to make changes. We make them in this, in the, within the, within the study and, and, uh, hopefully that makes the study stronger.
But as part of this transition, you will need to advise the research subjects who've been going to the same InVicro facility for, for almost twenty years that they're going to have to go to a new facility, correct?
We would, we would need to advise all of the subjects. Of course, most of the subjects have not been going to the InVicro facility for twenty years because most of the, uh, you know, but, but some have been going to the facility for several years. Some of them will be new, only been there for a year or two, or, uh, so it's a, it's a wide array. But yeah, we'll notify them that, uh, they would need to, uh, they would need to, to move on. But I, I think that, um, you know, that, that the, the allegiance of these individuals is of course to the PPMI study. They are very committed. Uh, and, uh, I think this will not be a problem for them as long as they can continue in the study uh, and continue to contribute. I would say, just as an aside, the people in the study are unbelievable. They're, they're, they are, uh, you know, they are giving of themselves in ways which I mean, um, most of us might not. Uh, so we, I totally agree that we want to be very, uh, uh, careful about, uh, ensuring that these individuals are treated, uh, with respect and appropriately. And in fact, that's why we're moving. Because we're fearful that this is, uh, uh, not, uh, adequately managed at InVicro.
But InVicro was given super site status by the Michael J. Fox Foundation for its performance.
Super site was a kind of a, a, a tagline. It's not a real status. Uh, but yes, uh, and, and again, I, I would, I, I'll say it again. Uh, there was a time when that site functioned very well. Uh, uh, certainly in two thousand seventeen, when Certainly in two thousand seventeen, when Invicro first took over for the next couple of years, there was, it functioned very well. Again, it has, that has changed. Now, as I said, my belief in, one of the main reasons why it's changed is the loss of personnel, the loss of resources, inability to do things. But whatever the reason is, it's changed. And so, yeah, it's, you know, we tend not to use those, that term anymore, super site, because we actually have, you know, it's sort of no longer relevant, not only for Invicro, but for any site. But it was a good site, it's not a good site anymore.
You mentioned the IRB process. Has Jing actually formally submitted paperwork to the IRBs to take over any of these studies that are being conducted by Jing? By Invicro?
Once again, Xing, you know, you're going to need to talk to Xing, but I, I think, again, they have they actually have strong regulatory expertise, something that is no longer available at Invicro. And I expect they are moving forward with all the things they need. But in order to move their, our, our study, that is the IND PPMI study, that's within our purview. We can move that, it is our responsibility to discuss this with the with the regulator, with the IRB, and just tell them that we're, that now we've moved the study to a different location.
What's the basis for the statement you just made, that Invicro doesn't have regulatory capabilities?
It's the, again, it's just our experience that individuals who we had previously relied on within the clinic to do regulatory activities left, weren't replaced. IND was asked to take on some additional responsibilities, which we did in that regard. So that's my, that's, this is my own experience, that's, that's what.
Did, did anyone from, who used to perform regulatory at Invicro, join IND?
I don't know the answer to that, to be honest, that's a good, I don't know.
Or join Xing?
Sorry?
Or join Xing? Did any of those people join Xing?
Did they join Xing? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know. You know, I know that Xing personnel has strong regulatory activities, but I don't know if any people from Invicro went there.
Do you know if Jing has a principal investigator lined up for any of the work that you're proposing to transfer over to them?
Yes, I, you know, again, I, again, I would, I can speak to the principal investigator for our own activities, for the IND activities that, you know, are required. So, yes, there is a principal, we have a principal investigator that would be able to that will, will be the principal, and by principal investigator here, I just want to be clear for everyone. The overall principal investigator for the study is, is myself. The, each of the sites has an investigator, and, and we would, we, I, we have a an individual who will serve as the principal investigator at the IND site, that would be located at Xing, yeah.
And is that principal investigator referring to David Russell?
No. My understanding, you know, I would like it to be David Russell, but unfortunately, David Russell is, is, has not chosen to, at this point, to to join this effort, but we still hope he will, but that would not be David Russell.
But you've had conversations with David Russell about joining Jing?
David has indicated to me that he would, was considering joining, joining Xing, yeah.
And you've talked to him about objection, you're interested in that? How many conversations about David Russell? I just how many questions are we going to permit on this, you know, here in Officer Novi?
Well, objections are very good in that area. I don't even know who David Russell is and why we are discussing him. This is a acquisition of imaging equipment CON, and why we care about him being on this project when we are talking about acquiring some imaging equipment. And if Mr. Fishman can make a statement about how this applies to the criteria in nineteen A dash six thirty-nine, which of those criteria it goes to, we can entertain this, otherwise I'm going to obtain the objection right now.
So I'm happy to address that point. So the statewide plan that Jing's counsel referred to in his opening remarks, he specifically cited, you know, page one forty-eight, which refers to one of the factors that this Office of Health Strategy should consider, the use of the scanners for clinical research. But, but on the prior page, page one forty-seven, it also refers to the fact that the applicant has to have a physician who is board certified, available during service hours. So that is a criteria right in the statewide plan. I'm trying to establish whether Jing actually has that person, you know, that physician, board certified physician, available when, if it receives the con application, purchases these scanners and is in a position to operate this equipment. So that's the relevance of the principal investigator.
Okay, I'm not sure that your questioning has gotten us there, because I just still have no idea who Bob Russell is. Maybe a question that was more direct, like you just stated, for instance, will they have a, you know, certified physician on staff during the process? That's a great question, but who's Bob Russell? Why does he have to be on the project? Why is he the only one that you've talked about? Let's go with a more basic question that actually goes to a point that's in there.
Of course, so let's, let's, let's walk through that.
We're not going to go down the Bob Russell path, because they just need to have someone. I don't care if it's not Bob Russell, it could be Joe Smith, his neighbor. It could, so let's, let's get them.
Sure, sure. So, so just to clarify for the record, David Russell is the current principal investigator on the PPMI work being conducted at Invicro, is that correct, Dr. Merrick?
Well, no, no, let's go with the, let's go with the, the on, we need to know if they're going to have somebody. Your question that you stated and what you wanted that goes to our plan is more appropriate than this line of questioning about Bob Russell.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify for the record, because we started talking about David Russell.
Or sorry, I'm very, I'm very confused as to who this person is. Why we were asking so many questions about him? He said, no, he's not going to be on this study, you keep going down this road, and I'm still confused as to who this person is, but if you want to ask about whether or not they're going to have a doctor at the facility, that is an appropriate question.
Okay, so let's go to that question, so Dr. Merrick again. Who is the physician that would act as the principal investigator essentially for Jing?
So again, I, I, I think you're going to need to speak to Xing about this, I know they are, I know they're hiring individuals, and they've hired a physician, but I, I think that's, that's on the Xing side. On the PPMI side, the, the person who would be the you know, we have our individuals who are IND employees who would be the principal investigator of the IND site.
But it sounds like you're not able to identify who that board certified physician is for Jing at this moment in time?
I can, I, again, I, I've been trying my best to tell you that I am not an employee of Xing, and that I am an, testifying on behalf of IND. I would prefer if the information that you get about Xing was from Xing individuals, because it will be more accurate. But I have confidence, just as, you know, understanding that they they know they need to have NRC approval, they know they need to have a physician, they are, have moved forward to, I am sure to acquire all of that in place to enable them to, to do the work. Why would they get the cameras if they can't do the work? So they would, that's, that's, that's the case. But I think it would be more accurate if you spoke, if you questioned the, the Xing individuals about Xing.
Sure. So, so thank you for that, Dr. Merrick. I would just like to point out, as I stated at the outset, Jing has the evidentiary burden here, we haven't seen the evidence yet that Jing has met that burden. Also like to point out, Dr. Merrick just stated he's testifying on behalf of IND. Well, IND is not an intervenor in this proceeding, they could have filed a petition to intervene. So we just note that for the record.
Testifying, is he doing cross?
You know, let me, let me just let's just state a few things, because I've been letting you run. I've been trying to let you guys. Attorney Fishman, I can't quote you, and I won't quote you in my decisions. So if you make a statement, it's not quotable, it's not going to be found anywhere in my decision, I can't go back and cite to that. So anything you want in his testimony needs to come in through your witnesses. What you're saying is going to be less important than what your witnesses say.
Of course, of course, we're just noting for the record, all the evidentiary issues.
So hold on, let me finish. I always tell my, my attorneys before me, if there's something really important you want to say, have your witness say it. Because your witness, I can quote, I can't quote you. So, and you'll get it, you'll get an opening statement and a closing statement. We're on the, the direct and the cross-examination of Dr. Merrick. So let's, let's finish the, you know, get back to our questions with Dr. Merrick about the acquisition of imaging equipment.
Sure, understood, and we will, if I, if I may, at this point, can we, can we ask for a short recess and go off the record? Just so we can consider. It's been about an hour and a half.
Yes, sure. So we will take a, are you close to the end of your questioning, because I need to give my staff a break as well, so.
Sure, close to the end, but I'd like to just consider, based on all the discussions we've had, I'd like to consider for a few minutes where we'd like to finish up the cross-examination.
All right, so I'm going to give us a ten minute break, we'll actually give it eleven minutes, we will come back at ten thirty-five. Okay, everyone, please mute yourself and turn off your camera on break if you, if possible, we'll see you at ten thirty-five.
Thank you.
She's been good when to come back home. All right, Attorney Karen Ante with us, let me make sure I have my court reporter, I can't see them all on the same page. All right, the court reporter is also back. All right, we are back on the record, it is now ten thirty-six, as Zoom has notified you, we are recording this hearing. Your remaining in this hearing is your consent to being recorded. If you would like to revoke that consent, please do so by exiting the hearing at this time. All right, after our brief recess, Attorney Fishman, do you have any more cross-examination questions related to nineteen A dash six thirty-nine?
I do. Just a few more questions for Dr. Merrick, and appreciate your patience, Hearing Officer Novi. So Dr. Merrick, as the principal investigator for the PPMI study and in your role with IND, are you overall responsible for all the activities that occur at the imaging sites?
We, yes, I think we have, we have a responsibility, but they, for the sites have their own, are, all of the sites are required to have their own local regulatory approvals, yeah.
And one of the statutory factors here is financial feasibility of Jing's proposal? What is the cost?
Exactly.
I didn't ask the question yet, but I appreciate your, you're clarifying that, I just wanted to make clear, I'm asking about one of the statutory factors, which is the financial feasibility of Jing's proposal. And I'd like to ask you about the moving work from Invicro to Jing. That's going to require costs, isn't it?
The moving? It should not require additional costs, no, it's simply, from our perspective anyway, we're moving, simply all we're doing is we're redirecting our activities to, and redirecting the activities of the of the participants to Xing. So I, I don't anticipate it will require significant or any additional cost to the study.
But, but the process would involve transferring patient files, obtaining regulatory approvals, all those things have a cost, don't they?
We would need to, we would need to, yes, I guess, we need to transfer patient files, that is to say, just to keep in mind that you know, in this study, as in many studies these days, all of the, all the patient, all of the study data are electronic data. They already exist in our hands, whether they come from Xing or from Invicro or from Timbuktu, we have them. What does, what is required? It would be to either transfer the, the patients who have hard charts, who have charts that exist in, and most, some of them are located at Invicro, some of them are located off-site at a, at a storage facility. So for the ones at a storage facility, we simply need to just change the, the ownership from the ones that are at Invicro. We will need to move those, we need to, you know, hire, hire a moving truck to move them, it would be, take a day probably, and move them to Xing. That's, I, I think, I, we're not, I'm not aware that there are other costs involved in doing this.
Under your contract with Invicro, though, you're required to compensate Invicro for any of the costs involved in transferring studies, isn't that correct?
Objection, is this, is this relevant again?
So it's relevant to the financial feasibility of Jing's proposal, which is one of the statutory factors.
Are these IND costs or Xing costs?
Yeah, these are, these are IND costs, I guess, I'm sorry, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, everybody, take a second. Mr. Fishman, I don't understand how these would be Xing costs for purchasing of equipment. So let's bring this back to the cost of the purchasing of the equipment, financial feasibility of the, of the CON, which is the acquisition of imaging.
Sure, I guess a question for Dr. Merrick, would, would Jing be expected to cover any of the costs associated with the transfer of the work?
No, no, there would be no expectation.
Okay, well, at this point, I don't have any further questions for Dr. Merrick, thank you.
At this point, Attorney Karen Ante, redirect?
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer Novi. Just to circle back, Dr. Merrick, you know, we've heard a lot about IND, MJF, PPMI, Invicro, and I just wanted to circle back. And can you explain, you know, I know this might be a little duplicative, but where does why, why Xing, why Xing imaging, and why these three proposed cameras?
Certainly, yeah, I mean, our, our view and our vision is to really accelerate the research activities. You know, we have been, in my view, you know, Xing has given us a gift. We are, we are, you know, at IND wanting to expand our research capabilities. Their, the, the ability to collaborate with them, to move the clinic to their, to, to their space, to be able to utilize their cameras to expand our research is really a tremendous asset for the PPMI study. So I, I think, and again, I just would emphasize that we, you know, the spec camera is sort of a bread and butter camera, we need that because of our, our interest in dopamine transporter imaging, which has been ongoing for many years, which has been, you know, very important in clinical research. And so we're delighted to have access to that camera or to a, we would be delighted to have access to that camera at, at that facility. The PET cameras are really focused on the future, and the NeuroExplorer is a camera which really offers you know, a, you know, a step up, it's sort of, you know, you now have you're, from a research perspective, you're kind of wide-eyed. This is, this is really an opportunity to really move to the next level and, and potentially do what we have wanted to do for ten years, which is develop a synuclean tracer. Of course, the capacity for the NeuroExplorer is in this very cutting-edge research, we need the PET camera to enable a capacity for all of the work that we're doing. So these cameras are, you know, you know, are a key part of our research. I would emphasize that the PPMI project I would emphasize that the PPMI project, uh, really acquires lots of data. It acquires imaging data. Requires, uh, other types of clinical data, biofluid data, genetic data. You know, so we have a, a wide array of data, but the imaging data is really a, uh, uh, an important component of, of what we do.
And from your perspective and your 35-year research career, do, do you believe in your opinion, from your perspective? Does Zing have the experience, resources and the quality and personnel needed? For the research, uh, needed by IND, PPMI and MJFF?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, in my, one of the things I've learned in my 35 years is that the key to doing good research are the people who are doing it. Uh, uh, that's always been true, you know, that's, that's how we were successful for these 35 years. Uh, and I think you really, um, you know, Zing has sort of an all-star cast. Uh, that I think really, uh, enables that research. So I think it's a new age, it's a new group, but I would be really confident that this is a, really, uh, an opportunity to really, Uh, expand our, expand the research and the Zing will be very, very successful.
And I know you alluded to this during cross, but will there be any significant disruptions to the research or the research participants? If this proposal were to be approved from IND's perspective?
Again, I, I, I don't think there will be any disruptions at all, and of course, we're, we, we expect that in, at the end, this will be an advantage. Uh, for the study to have a site that, you know, enables us to do more. Uh, you know, the, the, the subjects, uh, in the study will be redirected. Uh, they are, uh, as I said, extremely dedicated to PPMI. It's remarkable. Uh, and we, uh, we, we expect they will be, uh, uh, you know, without any difficulty. Will, will make their way to the same, same facility.
And Dr. Merrick, from your perspective as a, as a researcher, do, does more options or competition hurt? Um, or benefit research?
Yeah, I, I, again, of course, this is an obvious question in my mind, that more opportunities for research are better. Uh, and when you do research, you don't know which type of research is going to be successful and you don't know, and you don't know what. Uh, uh, you know, where, you know, way will lead to way and we'll be able to do more things. And, and, and so having more options is, is, is better. This, the research is not like a, a zero-sum game where you, there is only a certain amount of research. And I think this research that is, we're talking, been talking about is clearly a, a, a huge advantage. I, I would mention just by the way that if, if InVicro, uh, you know, is, is wanting to, uh, Add to its research capabilities and, and gather the people they need and they do research, that would be great too. Uh, you know, there's no, there's no reason why, uh, you know, this, this is not about anyone else not doing research. This is simply about, uh, Zing having the capability to really, uh, mo- move the field forward.
Couple of final questions, Dr. Merrick. From your perspective as a, as a researcher, a- as a human being, you know, what are, what are the benefits of, of Zing acquiring? These cameras and the benefits of, of, of performing the, this research? What, what's the need for it?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the need is obvious and, 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 and exceptional. It's just, you know, we, we have people. Who, and I'm sure, you know, I'm sure, you know, I, I, even on this call, many of us have family members with these types of diseases. We've been experiencing, uh, we've experienced the devastation that they cause. And we, we need to move forward and we need to move forward quickly, uh, and efficiently and reliably. Uh, to, uh, to increase the research opportunities that are, uh, are, are available for these disorders. And the, the, the great thing is, we can almost feel in our grasp that there is, uh, opportunities for new, new therapies. Uh, uh, with additional research. So we're, we're sort of close. Uh, and I think that, that's really why we want to move even more rapidly with even more, uh, kind of, uh, fervor. To, to get, get research, uh, done in this, and in these areas.
Uh, no further questions, Hearing Officer.
All right, thank you very much, Attorney, uh, Karen Ante. At this point, uh, we will move to an opening statement from the intervenor. Um, if you would like to make one, Attorney Fishman?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, so thank you, Hearing Officer Novy, for the opportunity to present our opening statement. And to explain InVicro's position on this matter. As we stated in our petition to intervene and in the prefiled testimony we submitted. From InVicro's Senior Vice President of Clinical Operations, as well as the additional testimony you're going to hear today. InVicro believes Jing's con application must be rejected because Jing hasn't met the evidentiary burden of establishing The statutory principles that the Office of Health Strategy is required to consider in this matter. I know we've had a lot of discussions so far on the record about those statutory principles and guidelines. And I'd like to first start my statement by explaining what our position is. So first of all, under 638, 639, excuse me, under, under 19A, 639. In evaluating any certificate of need application, the Office of Health Strategy is required To take into consideration and make written findings with respect to each of the guidelines and principles set forth of the statute. As I've stated, our position, and we're happy to file a post-hearing brief on this matter. Our position is that, under the definitions set forth in the Connecticut General Statutes, this is a healthcare facility. So we believe that all of the statutory guidelines and principles referring to a healthcare facility are applicable in this case. We also believe, just focusing on the statutory factors and principles that don't hinge on whether this is a healthcare facility or not. We believe that Jing has not met its burden. There is no clear public need for this proposed facility. Jing has not demonstrated that there's a clear public need for this proposed facility. InVicro operates a similar facility today in New Haven, in the same geographic location. Two blocks away from where Jing is proposing to set up its new facility. InVicro supports the PPMI study and other clinical studies that Jing is seeking to support. InVicro has been providing high-quality clinical imaging services at that New Haven facility for many years. And our witness will testify today about InVicro's supersite status and the other indicia of the high-quality services it's provided. It also has the ability to provide excess, it has excess capacity to support any additional demand for clinical imaging services. So there really is no clear public need, need for this proposal from Jing. That's our first point. Secondly, if you look at the statutory factors, uh, it requires Jing to demonstrate That the research subject population is seeking to serve, has a need for this facility. We don't believe that's the case. The research subject population that Jing is targeting with this facility is already being served by InVicro. These people are coming to InVicro's facilities, as, as you heard from Dr. Merrick, for, for 20 or so- something years. We also believe that the approval of Jing's application is likely to adversely affect the research subject community. And those existing studies, because it will be disruptive. There will be regulatory responsibilities and other patient data that needs to be transferred. It will force those research subjects to visit a different facility, uh, without any compelling need. The second reason why we think Jing's application must be rejected. The failure to show that the research subject population has any need for the proposed facility. Third, Jing's failed to demonstrate that the proposed facility will not result in any unnecessary duplication Of an existing facility, as required under section 639 subsection nine. If there was ever a proposal that violated that guiding principle of the statute, it is this proposal. Jing is proposing to set up a facility essentially two blocks away from InVicro's existing facility. How is that not unnecessary duplication? It's targeting the same studies. It's seeking to solicit InVicro's employees to join Jing. We believe this is a classic example of unnecessary duplication. In fact, in its application, in response to question 45. About whether its proposed facility would shift any work away from an, an existing facility, Jing didn't provide any answer. We don't think Jing has met its evidentiary burden on this point. Jing could have proposed to locate this imaging facility in any other part of the state of Connecticut. But it's deliberately targeted New Haven and a location two blocks away from InVicro's existing facility. Because we believe it's intent on taking away InVicro's business. That's what you've heard today. This case is all about taking away InVicro's business, soliciting its employees. And essentially, the Office of Health Strategy should not let its regulatory authority be approved, abused for these purposes. In violation of the unnecessary duplication principle. It's the third reason why we believe Jing's application should be denied. Lack of clear public need. No need among the research population for this facility. It's already being served by InVicro today. An unnecessary duplication. Fourth reason, Jing has failed to demonstrate that its proposal is financially feasible. That's a statutory factor and it doesn't appear to turn on whether this is a healthcare facility or not. Again, we, we continue to take the position this is a healthcare facility. But even if it wasn't, we have to look at the language and the text of the statutory factors. It refers to financial feasibility. Jing is proposing to purchase three scanners, including a Neuro Explorer that costs approximately $3 million. As part of an overall capital investment, proposed capital investment of nearly $7 million. However, there's no evidence in the record that Jing has the capital necessary to make these substantial investments. There's only a single passing reference in its application to purported investments that would be made by its parent company, Mitro. There's no evidence that the parent company has made those investments. So we have nothing in the record that shows that Jing has the capital necessary to purchase this equipment. This goes directly to the financial feasibility statutory criteria. Jing's also failed to present any kind of reliable business case. That its proposed investment of approximately $7 million would be financially feasible. So that's the fourth reason why we believe Jing's application should be rejected. It has not met its burden, the applicant's burden of demonstrating that its proposal is financially feasible. Fifth, fifth reason, we believe Jing's application should be rejected. It has failed to demonstrate the relationship of its proposed project with the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. There's another statutory factor that essentially applies, even if you determine this is not a healthcare facility, and we disagree with that. But even if you don't take that position, Jing is still required to demonstrate That its proposed acquisition of these scanners is consistent with the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. It's a plan that Jing's counsel mentioned in his opening statements. He referred to chapter five of the statewide plan. And in chapter five, on page 134, it states as follows. Entities seeking authorization to acquire imaging equipment are required to demonstrate they meet the clear public need. As well as the other criteria set forth in section 639. We don't believe Jing has put in any evidence that its proposed acquisition of these scanners Is consistent with the statewide plan. On page 39, the statewide plan specifically warns about scanner purchases That would result in a mismatch of need and capacity. Well, Jing's proposal to buy three more scanners, two blocks away from InVicro's existing facility. Would result in exactly such a mismatch of need and capacity. We also point out Jing has failed to provide any substantive answer in its application in response to question seven. Which asks about how its proposed project would align with the statewide plan. Again, failing to meet its evidentiary burden. We'll also point out that Jing's application is deficient on the following three factors mentioned in the statewide plan. Failed to demonstrate that it has the sufficient capital to finance the purchase of the equipment. That's on page 148. It ignores the likely impact of its proposed facility on existing facilities, InVicro's facility. That's on page 146, and it has no history of running accredited, financially successful facilities in the United States. That's on page 148. These are all factors that the Office of Health Strategy is required to consider when it's looking at Jing's application. Jing's argument seems to be simply, this is the purchase of clinical equipment and therefore it must be approved. Jing's counsel referred to one factor set forth in chapter five, which refers to The use of the scanners for clinical research. We acknowledge that's one factor. But Jing's argument on the merits here with respect to the evidentiary burden seems to be As long as we're proposing to bu- bu- buy clinical imaging equipment, that's all we have to show. That cannot be what the statutory framework requires. We have all these other factors that the Office of Health Strategy must consider. So the fifth reason, as I've stated, for why we believe Jing's application should be rejected is that it's failed to show and demonstrate The relationship of its proposed project with the statewide plan. And its application and supporting materials are deficient for the reasons that I've just stated. Finally, we believe that the Office of Health Strategy must consider the national security risks arising from the Chinese ownership Of Jing as part of its evaluation of whether there's a clear public need for Jing's proposed facility. We addressed this issue in our petition to our intervene. We noted there's a lack of clarity about the different entities involved in Jing's ownership chain. And we believe Jing should be obligated to provide additional information to the Office of Health Strategy, which clears up those ambiguities. In addition to that lack of clarity, we believe there are substantial national security concerns raised by Jing's proposal. Because it would give Chinese interests access to the personal data of US research subjects. The US government's concerns about China, including its designation of China as a foreign adversary of the US. Are well-known and widespread. Earlier this year, President Biden issued an executive order, warning about the national security risks Of allowing the personal data of US citizens and residents to be accessible by Chinese entities. Those concerns are magnified here, we respectfully point out, when we're dealing with research subject data. Particularly for a vulnerable population of individuals who may be suffering from different stages of neurodegenerative diseases. We also believe the research subjects participating in the PPMI and other studies may be reluctant to continue participating in those studies. Once they're advised, their, their information might be shared with a Chinese-owned company. And therefore, we urge the Office of Health Strategy to take these issues into consideration As it looks at whether there's a clear public need for Jing's proposed acquisition of the three scanners. So in summary, for all those foregoing six reasons, we believe that Jing's application should be denied. Thank you for the opportunity to present the opening statement that I've just made. I now have the honor of asking InVicro's Senior Vice President of Clinical Operations, Denise Ferriolo. To present her witness testimony on behalf of InVicro, in order to elaborate on the concerns that I've just described. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, all right, so we will go ahead and ask, uh, your witness to turn her camera on. And, uh, enable her audio. Uh, how do you pronounce your last name?
Hi, thanks. It's Ferriola.
Ferriola, okay. All right, Ms. Ferriola, if you could please raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you have provided in your prefile And the evidence you shall give in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
All right, great. Thank you. Uh, yeah, it, it apparently, um, I'm going to ask our, uh, our, um, Our paralegal, uh, Ms. Fentes, if you can just make sure that the person who's speaking comes on camera. Uh, because it got stuck on somebody on the seventh floor somewhere, um. All right, if you could speak again, Ms. Ferriola, just raise your right hand and say it again. Do you solemnly swear?
I do.
All right, thank you. I will ask you to, um, go ahead with your testimony, please. Uh, we do have your written testimony. You do not need to reread the statement as written. But I do ask that you state your name, spell your last name, and then also state at the beginning whether or not you adopt Your written testimony that you submitted prior to testifying today.
Great, thank you. Uh, so yes, my name is Denise Ferriola, uh, that's spelled F as in Frank, E R R, A I O L O. I am presently the Senior Vice President of Clinical Operations at InVicro. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony today. Um, and before I begin, I would like to adopt my prefiled testimony on the record.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So on behalf of InVicro. So on behalf of Invicro, a clinical research imaging facility, um, operating in New Haven since about two thousand and one, um. Invicro and I strongly oppose Jing's application to acquire two PET CT scanners. And one spec CT scanner for new clinical research imaging facility that Jing is seeking to establish. Just a mere two blocks away from Invicro's existing facility. I have personally worked for Invicro for more than twenty-three years, uh, that time includes my time with the predecessor company, Molecular Neuroimaging, which Invicro purchased in two thousand and sixteen. My primary role today with Invicro is to provide direct oversight of all clinical research imaging operations uh at our New Haven facility. Including those provided for IND and for our other customers. In my prefiled testimony, I set forth specific reasons why Invicro believes the application should be denied. I also provided some background information on the various entities and individuals involved here, including IND and Jing. I won't repeat that information here today, but I would like to focus my testimony on the services that Invicro provides from its New Haven facility. And the specific reasons why we believe Jing's application should be denied. So Invicro's facility is located at sixty Temple Street in New Haven. Uh, we're currently equipped with one PET CT scanner, one PET scanner, one spec CT scanner, and one spec scanner. Invicro's facility also has radiochemistry manufacturing capabilities and we have roughly forty total employees supporting our activities out of our New Haven facility. With the two PET scanners and two spec scanners, Invicro's facility has the capacity to support more than the projected need for clinical research scanning services in the New Haven area into the foreseeable future. Invicro scanners have been audited and maintained in accordance with industry standards and have allowed Invicro to meet customer timing, delivery, and quality requirements. Our scanners are used to service the clinical trials that Invicro has supported for many years. This includes the Parkinson's Progression Markers Initiative, PPMI, that we've talked about today. As study sponsored by the Michael J. Fox Foundation. The research subjects enrolled in the clinical trials, including Parkinson's patients participating in the PPMI study. Visit the Invicro facility in New Haven, interact with Invicro staff members during their appointments. Receive brain scans at the facility using our equipment and under the supervision of our local PI neurologists employed by Invicro. The neurologist employed by Invicro acts as the principal investigator for the clinical study work. And has attendant regulatory responsibilities for oversight of the execution of the study at our facility. Invicro has local clinic staff of approximately twenty-three, including physicians, nurses. Nuclear medicine technologists, study coordinators, and others who work together to ensure the best care and safety for all research participants served at its New Haven facility. Many of those participants are suffering from various stages of the diseases mentioned earlier today, including Parkinson's and Alzheimer's. This, these staff partner with Invicro's operations teams, including regulatory, IT, and others to execute data collection, analysis, and delivery of clinical imaging results to its sponsors. Invicro also has radiochemistry capabilities in its New Haven location comprised of seven good manufacturing practice or GMP laboratories. Those include two clean rooms equipped with ISO five biosafety cabinets, two laboratories with hot cells for automated manufacturing. One laboratory with a glove box and lead shielded areas for manual manufacturing. And two laboratories with quality control equipment or quantitative product analysis. Invicro's radiofactoring, radiochemistry manufacturing infrastructure is managed by a team of approximately twelve local employees with specialty training in chemistry, radiochemistry, and quality control analysis. The facilities in New Haven have undergone and passed numerous rigorous audits by agencies such as the FDA and the NRC. In addition to many successful NRC audits and FDA inspections, Invicro is also routinely inspected by its pharma sponsors and their respective quality groups. Over the last five years, Invicro's clinic in New Haven has undergone eleven sponsor audits without any significant deficiency findings. Invicro provides clinical imaging services under a contract with IND and under contracts with pharma companies that are sponsoring clinical research studies. My testimony today will focus on the services that Invicro provides under its contract with IND. For PPMI and other clinical studies, IND is often listed as the clinical tri- clinical trial site for imaging services. However, IND subcontracts all of the actual services to Invicro since Invicro, since IND does not have the facilities, equipment. Or staff to perform any clinical or imaging services itself. IND pays for such services that Invicro provides with the funds that IND receives from the Michael J. Fox Foundation and other sponsors of the trials. With IND presumably retaining an unknown percentage of such funds for itself. The Fox Foundation, which sponsors the PPMI study, has recognized Invicro as a super site or premier site based on its performance and recruitment capabilities. Invicro was one of only eleven sites nationwide to receive this status in two thousand and twenty-four. Invicro's New Haven facility had the highest number of DAT scan referrals. The highest number of DAT scans completed and returned, and the highest number of DAT scans scheduled than any other site in the PPMI study. Invicro's new owner, Catvest, is fully committed to supporting, investing in, and expanding Invicro's business. Nonetheless, as previously stated, IND recently notified Invicro that it te- intends to terminate certain clinical imaging studies. That has contracted Invicro to perform, including the PPMI study. And IND representatives have notified Invicro that IND intends to transfer that work to Jing Imaging. IND is not exercising any contractual right to terminate Invicro's services for cause, and IND has not advised Invicro of any material concerns with the quality. Timelines or delivery of services. Therefore, Invicro can only surmise that the termination is part of a coordinated effort between IND and Jing to take over Invicro's business in the New Haven area. These efforts by IND and Jing are disruptive to Invicro's ongoing business activities and the livelihood of Invicro's existing employees. I'd like to now focus my testimony on the specific reasons why Invicro believes that Jing's application should be denied. Simply stated, we do not believe that Jing has met its evidentiary burden of establishing that its application is consistent with the relative, relevant statutory principles. For the following reasons. First, Jing has failed to demonstrate there is a clear public need for its proposed facility in New Haven. Invicro is currently providing the same type of clinical imaging services that Jing is seeking to provide. Including on the current PPMI study in the same location. IND and other clinical imaging study sponsors have not raised any concerns with the quality, timelines, or delivery of Invicro's clinical imaging work. There is no need in New Haven for Jing's clinical imaging facility because Invicro has excess capacity to provide additional imaging services. Invicro currently performs approximately fifty scans per month from its New Haven facility. And typically supports fifteen to twenty clinical research studies at any given point in time. Invicro's facility has a capacity to serve two hundred and three research subjects per month. The projected need for clinical research imaging services over the next five years is less than one hundred patients per month. Based on an annual growth rate of ten percent. This is consistent with Parkinson's disease diagnosis and treatment market growth estimates. Therefore, Invicro has more than enough capacity today to support future growth in the clinical imaging studies from IND and other customers. Second, Jing has failed to demonstrate that the relevant research subject population has a need for its proposed facility. Jing is targeting the same research subject population that Invicro serves today from its facility in New Haven, including research subjects in the PPMI study. The research subject population has no need for Jing's facility, they are served by Invicro today and familiar with Invicro staff in the clinic and its clinicians. In fact, Jing's proposed facility will disrupt ongoing clinical imaging work. And negatively affect the research subject population by forcing these individuals. Again, many of whom are suffering from neurodegenerative diseases to enroll at a new facility. It's also important to note that Jing has not previously operated an imaging facility in the United States. That three, two of the three scanners it's proposing to purchase are refurbished scanners with similar capacity as Invicro scanners. And there is no guarantee that Jing would actually purchase the expensive Neuro Explorer scanner if its con application is granted. Third, Jing has failed to show that its proposed facility will not result in unnecessary duplication of Invicro's existing facility in the same geographic location. Fourth, Jing has failed to provide any evidence to demonstrate that its proposed acquisition of the three scanners at issue, particularly the Neuro Explorer, is financially feasible. Jing has not submitted any evidence indicating that it has the capital necessary to purchase the three scanners, and it failed to submit copies of any contracts relating to the purchase of those three scanners. Jing also has not submitted sufficient evidence to justify the projected level of scans that it hopes to provide upon establishment of its facility. Fifth point, Jing has failed to demonstrate that its proposed facility meets the requirements set forth in the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan issued in June two thousand and twenty-four. More specifically, Jing has failed to provide any evidence in its con application of the impact of its proposed project on Invicro's assist- existing facility in New Haven. Jing has also not provided any evidence that it has sufficient capital to finance its proposed purchase of the scanners. They have also not shown that their proposed facility, again, which is seeks to be located just two blocks away from Invicro's facility. Would not result in a mismatch between capacity and need. The sixth point, Jing has failed to demonstrate its proposed facility will improve quality, accessibility. And cost effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the New Haven region. As noted in my prefiled testimony, Jing's proposed facility will only disrupt the existing clinical trial imaging services being provided by Invicro. This will result in higher costs for the clinical trial sponsors funding the research. In addition, granting Jing's application will only accelerate Jing's concerted efforts with IND to take away employees and business from Invicro. Finally, I'd like to point that, as noted in my prefiled testimony, we believe that Jing's application raises serious national security concerns because Jing is owned by Chinese entities. The lack of clarity about the precise Chinese entities that directly or indirectly own Jing is noted in the prefiled testimony. However, there is no lack of clarity on the following point. Jing is owned by Chinese interests. The US government has designated China as a foreign adversary of the United States. And there are numerous concerns about Chinese companies having access to personal data of US citizens and residents. The risk here is that personal data of vulnerable research subjects. Would be available to entities in China, and some of the research subjects could decide to drop out of the imaging trials because of these concerns. We strongly believe the Office of Health Strategy needs to take these concerns into consideration as it evaluates whether there is clear public need for Jing's application. In conclusion, I I want to thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. To explain the grounds for Invicro's objection to Jing's application and to describe why this matter is so important to the employees of Invicro. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to a um cross-examination by the applicants, as I stated, for other. Um, with our, with our applicant's witness, please keep your uh questions related to nineteen eight dash six thirty-nine, the twelve. Uh, points that I have to look at for deciding a CON application. Attorney Karen Ante.
Um, in order to do that, um, Attorney Officer Novi, could we have a five or ten minute break before we resume on cross?
Yes, you know what, I'm gonna, I, after this applicant, we would have gone to break, but let's, what we're going to do before we go to break, um. I will, we'll break for this, we will finish up with this witness, um, then we'll take lunch at twelve, I will say that. Uh, we will decide whether or not to allow the public portion to go forward as stated at one, um. Otherwise, we'll talk about possibly pushing the public portion back and then us ask, and us ask your questions at one o'clock. Uh, we'll make that decision now during the break. Um, and then I just want to remind everybody who is on this call, who would like to make a public comment. Public comments did start at eleven, uh, sign up for public comments started at eleven AM, you may put your name in the chat. And uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Fentes will go ahead and take your name and your contact information and we'll put you onto a list if you would like to make a public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, but you would like to not do it during public comment session, you can file written comments. With us for up to a week after this hearing, so that will run through August twenty-eighth at CONcomment@CT.gov. Again, that, um, you can, you can email us your public comment at CONcomment@CT.gov if you would like to do that as well. We're going to go ahead and take a fifteen minute break, um, we will start at, uh.
We can do eleven thirty for like, just thirteen minutes if you like.
Let's, let's get, uh, let's give the staff a, a.
Oh, sure, sure.
Um, we'll start at eleven thirty-five, we'll come back and begin our cross-examination. Everybody, if you could mute yourself and stop your video, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to come on. Okay, let's see, we're missing the person we are cross-examining, so we will wait for her to come back. All right, good morning, it's eleven thirty-five AM, uh, as Zoom told people about a minute ago, we are recording this hearing, so if you, um, you're. If you revoke your consent to be recorded, then please exit the hearing at this time, um. And during the break, we did decide that what we will do is we will open our public comment as scheduled at one PM. Therefore, I ask that everyone's witnesses be available after public comment. Because depending on when we end, OHS will take, will do their questioning of the witnesses after the public comment. So if you would like to sign up for a public comment, please do so at this time via our chat function. And Ms. Fentes will put you on a list, um, and you will give public comment at one PM. All right, it looks like we have everybody back, so I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Attorney Karen Ante for his redirect. Or sorry, not redirect for his cross-examination, I apologize.
Sure, um, and I don't know whether this will um impact your scheduling today, uh, hearing, Officer Novi, and. This will be very anticlimactic, but I'm uh confirming right now, we do not have any cross for Ms. Ferriola, so we. Look forward to the public comments and look forward to answering all of OHS, uh, OHS's questions, we have Jing's team here ready. Ready, willing, and able to answer all of OHS's questions, so I don't know if that gives you more time or if that's a pleasant surprise, but we don't.
Okay, so hold on a second, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, since you did not cross-examine, uh, Attorney Fishman, um, I will give you a very. Do you have any redirect of your, of your intervenor who just gave her testimony?
I do, I have a few questions that I'd like to ask.
And after keep them concise and sticking to the nineteen eight dash six thirty-nine criteria, so let's stick with those, all right.
Sure. So Denise, thank you for your testimony today. First, I think it'd be helpful if you could describe the difference between the core labs and and clinical activities, because that came up in Dr. Merrick's testimony as well.
Yeah, certainly, so we are contracted for both uh types of services. Um, as part of our clinical services, uh, based out of our New Haven facility. We contract separately for those, uh, we mentioned already today several times the staff that support those trials. Um, patients come to our facility and are seen by our clinicians, um, as part of that clinical trial and also undergo. Many activities related to the trial, uh, but most specifically, uh, the imaging components, um. And for the core lab activities, we are contracted separately. Um, we have an operational team, uh, that's probably close to a a hundred staff. Uh, that support, um, the PPMI study worldwide, so data from every clinical site in the trial comes to us. Um, uh, comes to our core lab, uh, services. That data is received electronically, those data, the imaging data are, uh, quality controlled by teams that work for Invicro. Um, those data are then analyzed and or read depending on the study requirements. And then provided back to pharma sponsors, so in the case of PPMI, Dr. Merrick mentioned that those data are publicly available. Um, we also provide that data to, to a specific website for, uh, public availability.
And Dr. Merrick referenced, um. Can generalize, not specific, but generalized concerns about, uh, Invicro's performance over the years, did that, did that? Do those concerns relate to the core lab activities or the clinical activities?
Yeah, so, so one of the, um, comments that Dr. Merrick made specifically, which was around image analysis, that relates directly to our core lab activities.
Okay, is IND proposing to transfer any of the core lab activities to Jing?
Not presently, uh, presently, the core lab activities are staying contracted with IND.
Okay, so that means with with respect to the clinical activities and the use of the scanners. That we've been focused on today, that that those quality concerns Dr. Merrick raised do not relate to those services, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, uh, Dr. Merrick also seemed to downplay the reference to the supersite, I think he called it a tagline. Could, can you explain what the supersite status is and and why that's important to Invicro?
So it's important to Invicro, we understand, um, this was part of a a designation given to us, uh, many years ago. Um, and, uh, I think the number of supersites in the trial grew over time. Um, but it what it really means is that we're a high enroller in the trial and a a high performer in the trial. Um, and, and. And specifically, I think we've received the largest number of DAT referrals. So DAT is the imaging that we do on the spec cameras here in, in Inviro's site in Haven. And that number of patient referrals is two hundred and seventy-eight. The next two closest sites that received DAT referrals were at a hundred and forty-five and ninety-eight respectively. So we've had the highest number of referrals, the highest number of DAT scans on our spec scanner completed and returned at a hundred and forty-eight, again, with the next two closest being eighty-eight and fifty-two. So, you know, for us, it's really about our performance and our successful performance as a imaging center.
And Dr. Merrick, in his testimony, also implied that Inviro may not have the personnel necessary to support the, the services. Can, can you speak to the personnel issues?
Yeah, I think specifically one of the issues and concerns that Dr. Merrick raised again was around the, the core lab data. And there was a backlog of analysis that was not completed. And there were some challenges with getting that analysis up to date. I think it's important to note that during the time that that occurred, the image analysis team at Inviro was being overseen by Dr. Roger Gunn. Dr. Gunn currently is employed by Xing Imaging. He departed Inviro earlier in twenty twenty-four. We did correct the errors that, the issues that were found. It wasn't errors in analysis. Again, it was a delay in getting the data analysis complete, as Dr. Merrick mentioned, but yes, I just want to point that out.
Great. And, and back to the, you know, potential quality issues that, that Dr. Merrick referred to in his testimony. Are those routine issues in your industry? Is that something that comes up with every provider?
Yeah, specifically on the clinical side, any issues that I'm aware of are, I don't want to call them standard, but are, yes, routine GCP issues that arise during the course of a clinical trial. We have a regulatory team and a quality team that tracks and provides oversight of the investigations for any of these issues. And so, yeah, all from my perspective, routine and many of which we actually raise to IND versus IND identifying and raising to us. So I think one other comment that was made that I, I do want to go on the record to, to clarify was that we had lost some resources on, on our regulatory team as well. We've recently hired in the last year GCP specialists to help combat any issues that were identified. And in addition to that, have hired a senior director, director of regulatory affairs for North America.
Great. I have no further redirect questions at this time.
Okay, so at this point, what I'm going to do is I don't want us to start our questions and then go on for about thirteen minutes and then go on break. So what I will do is I will ask everybody's witnesses to be available at one PM after we do the public, the public comment portion of our afternoon. Now that we have a few minutes, I'm going to go ahead and let you know that what's going to happen is we're going to go into a public portion. OHS will ask questions of any of the available witnesses. If your witness is not available for questioning, they, that, their testimony will be less available to us. So please make sure all of your, all of your witnesses are present. And after that, we will then go ahead and issue a late file order for any requests that come from my office. We will have a closing statement from the intervenor's attorney and then the closing argument from the applicant's attorney before ending the hearing. And I would like to remind everybody that, that the, that this is a hearing, again, and I know I've done this many, many times and we keep on saying it, this is a hearing about the, the acquisition of imaging equipment by Xing Imaging. So I would like us to keep our thoughts and our comments to the acquisition of imaging equipment by Xing Imaging when we come back after lunch and also for public comments about the acquisition of imaging equipment. If you want to file a comment about that, we would love to hear about that. All right. And with that, it's eleven forty-five. I think we're gonna take an hour and fifteen minutes for lunch. We will see you all back here at one PM for the public portion. And if you would like to sign up, please do so in the chat with Ms. With Ms. Fentes. Thank you, and we'll see.
Hearing Officer Novi, can, may I ask a question about the public comment period? And I apologize for, for interrupting. So my understanding is, you know, that's designed not to allow witnesses for either the applicant or the intervenor to make comments, right? We've already had the opportunity to put in our case in chief.
It's a public comment. If somebody, we're not going to, we've had, and this does happen, people from an organization come in and make a comment and they weren't presented as a witness. I can't prevent them from doing that. But I mean, if they, if they make a comment and we decide that that inquires more investigation, we can put them under oath and ask them questions. But there are level, you know, public comment is public comment. If somebody wants to jump on and make a comment and sign up, they are within their rights to do so.
Okay, my understanding was that it is actually not designed to allow representatives or, you know, affiliated with the applicant or the intervenor to, to make additional comments.
Intervener, if you're an intervenor, you present your, your witnesses. But I mean, if we've had somebody come in and say, hey, I would like to talk, I it's a public comment, they signed up, they might not have, you know, spoken to us ahead of time. But if you come in as an intervenor, you bring your case and you present your case during this.
And the same is with the applicant, right? The applicant also has presented their case. I just want to make that clear.
People who worked for a company walk in and say, hey, I work for them. I just want to make a comment. And then they make a very brief comment, under three minutes. Sometimes it's a minute long. Am I, you know? But comments are taken, are given the weight that I deem necessary in my decision, so.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, goodbye, everybody. I'll see you at one. Wanted to make sure I didn't ask for it when we were already recording. All right, good afternoon. It is one PM. As you were just notified by the Zoom voice, we are recording this hearing. If you do not consent to being recorded, then we would ask that you vacate the hearing at this time. All right, welcome back. For those of you joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning a CON application filed by Xing Imaging LLC, document number twenty-four dash three two seven one four dash CON. This morning, we had most of the technical portion. We will be breaking now for for public comments. We will call the names of those who are registered in, in order of their signup. However, after speaking to, to Fay, we have not had anybody register. So at this point, I will make an open call to anybody who is in this, who is currently in this hearing, who would like to make a public comment. Please enter your name in the chat and we will give Fay a minute or two to collect any of those. So while I do that, I will say that speaking is typically limited to three minutes, but since nobody has signed up yet, we may not have to go through this portion. Additionally, we strongly encourage you or anyone that is listening to submit further written comments to OHS by email or mail. No, preferably email, though it is hard to make sure mail gets there within a week. No later than one week, seven calendar days from today. The email address to email those comments is concomment@ct.gov. Again, that is C-O-N-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@ct.gov. All right, our contact information is listed on our website and the public information sheet and the public information agenda, which was provided earlier. Point, I will go back and check with Fay. She says still nothing. So at this point, we will move on to to our questions from OHS. And I'm going to start with those. My question, my first question is going to be directed to whoever in shipment and good one will be needed to answer these. Let's go ahead and have Mr. Karen Ante unmute himself and introduce the people from, from the applicants who will be answering questions, Xing Imaging, and I will swear them in.
Sure. And, and just so you're aware, Attorney Officer Novi, we have the people here in the room physically. And we also have our CEO and Chief Scientific Officer, who are not with us. But they'll also introduce themselves and the video.
So let's start with the three people in the room. I'll swear them all in at once, and then we'll go to the separate video person so we can also see them and once them get sworn in.
Perfect. John, you want to start?
Oh, no, say your name, spell your last name for the record.
John Miluzzo, M-I-L-U-Z-Z-O.
Okay, and your title?
Senior Director of Business Services.
Great. I'm gonna just have everyone say their name and title first, and I'll swear you all in at once and just have you say yells separately so we can get them all on record. Next person?
Rebecca Evans, I'm General Manager.
And then the next person?
Justin Alboni, A-L-B, and I'm Senior Director of Imaging Operations.
Great, wonderful. Okay, if you can all please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm that the testimony you are about to provide today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God or upon penalty of perjury, we'll go around the room like we did for names.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. You're all sworn in. Next witness?
Uh, next, Dr. Roger Gunn.
Hey, Dr. Gunn, if you could unmute yourself and go up, I see you're on record. Hello, you could introduce yourself stating your name and your title for the record.
Roger Gunn, G-U-N-N, Chief Science Officer, Xing Imaging.
If you could please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and put your hand down now.
Sorry. Next is our CEO, or Xing's CEO, Dr. Gilles Tamagnan. Gilles?
Yes, good morning. My name is Gilles Tamagnan, G-I-L-L-E-S-T-A-M-A-G-N-A-N. And I'm the CEO of the company.
All right, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and put your hand down. All right, Attorney Karen Ante, anyone else?
That's it. And assuming like we've done in other hearings, Attorney Officer Novi, once OHS asks the questions, I would just, because we're in multiple rooms, I would just respectfully ask a few seconds just to decide who the best person or persons is best to answer your, the rest of your staff's questions.
All right, that is actually, thank you for mentioning that. I will also mention too, I write notes in, on paper. So if I am not looking at you or do not follow up immediately, it's because I'm still writing and my handwriting is horrible. So I will come back to you, I will look back up at you as soon as I'm done writing. All right, with that, first question to whoever Attorney Karen Ante thinks is best to answer is on page twelve of Exhibit C, that's the original application. You stated the equipment will be used to advance future medical care and unmet medical, medical areas of need. Please explain what these unmet areas of need would be.
I can take that one. So I think the imaging research that Xing Imaging is wanting to do here is fundamental to some of the huge needs in neurodegenerative diseases such as Alzheimer's and Parkinson's, but also in oncology and beyond. I mean, if we just look in the last couple of years where we've made the first inroads in having treatments for Alzheimer's for the first time in the hundred years since this disease was discovered. I mean, this is a tremendous development, but it's only the start. And so we need to improve these medicines for Alzheimer's. And what we also need to do is take the learning that we've had from the success of the development of these, which have been underpinned by imaging, is to take that imaging strategy to diseases like Parkinson's and also to various different cancers. So there are a wide range of unmet needs, and this is a particularly important time for this research. There's a real inflection at this moment, having seen this progress in Alzheimer's and in other areas.
Okay, and as a follow-up, and this can go to, again, anybody who can answer it. Do you have any specific commitments for the types of research that would be conducted on these machines?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes, this, Dr. Tamagnan speaking. Yes, we do have some commitment to work on this machine.
And what, can you elaborate a little on maybe what diseases or what groups?
Yeah, so the, on this, it will be Parkinson's disease and also on a kind of another neurological disorder which is called PSP.
Sorry, that's P, P as in Peter, S as in Sam?
Yeah, P as a Peter, S as a Sam, and P as a Peter.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so that will be the first two things that we have. We are talking to many groups that are very excited for us to get this equipment, and they will work with us at a time. But of course, until the equipment, until you give us the approval for the equipment, it's difficult to have a signed contract with anyone.
Okay.
Attorney Officer Novi, can I, can I interrupt? Sorry, are you looking for also contractual commitments that Xing Imaging has to perform this work?
Well, we're looking for, you know, we, we'd like to hear about contractual ones if you have them, but also areas that you're looking to branch into for the unmet need.
Okay, is that, I just didn't know if you wanted to hear from Dr. Merrick, who, you know, works at IND, who has discussed, you know, actual written contracts that they have with Xing to perform the research studies. Do you want to hear more about that?
I think I have a good bit about his contract. I've, I've heard quite a bit about that today. So, but this was more to develop the unmet need.
Okay.
So
Maybe, I'm sorry, I don't know if I could have just did, because I think it's really interesting. Is that, you know, as, as I think Dr. Gunn indicated, and I mentioned earlier, I think we're really at the start of a new era in neurodegenerative diseases. So I think if we just all think about what happens when you go to your doctor, when you're age fifty or sixty and you get tested for, you know, for prostate cancer or breast cancer or diabetes or whatever. Now, we are looking to a day which not to in the future where we're going to be tested for a variety of neurodegenerative, not just Parkinson's and Alzheimer's disease, but other less common of these disorders. And as PSP is one of them, but frontal temporal dementia is another. And dementia with Lewy body disease is another. And so there are, these are all disorders which affect, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of people. And we, this is what, this is the future that we, you know, so we need to get to a point where you can use imaging for, for, to assess these types of, of disorders. We're not there yet, but this is the type of work that's going to get us there. That's the exciting part.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna move into another kind of related question that may have kind of already been answered, but what areas, in part of it was answered, what areas of research will you be focusing on if Xing Imaging is given a CON?
Roger?
Roger and you.
Well, I was ready to give the power, to the word to Roger, yeah. But we are going to start to work on, like I said, Parkinson's disease, Alzheimer's disease. We continue the work that we had, that I, we initiated years ago. Because first and foremost, I think I am a scientist and passion is there. So I would say Parkinson's disease, Alzheimer's disease, like I've said, PSP, like Dr. Merrick said, FTD. And of course, we will go into oncology, not today, because we need to take one step at a time. But that's the direction where we are going. The goal here is really to do science, to understand disease, to be able to provide tools that are going to help us to treat disease down the road because we understand how they come.
Okay, and to follow up on that, since those are the, those are the areas that you're going to be focusing on if given a CON. Do you have documentation of plans, either through commitments from research entities or business plan, or in business plans and proposals for Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and PSP? Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and PSP?
Yes, we do. So we have, uh, with one, um, so I, I don't think I can give you the names now for obvious reason, um, but with one, um, uh, one biotech, um, they are extremely interested, are working with us to look at PSP to understand better, uh, the disease because they have program, um, clinical programs they are developing for this. And, um, obviously, we have, uh, a very strong interaction already with the Mycology Fox Foundation, so we are going to work on Parkinson's disease. And by, if I can add something on Parkinson's disease, uh, on my young age, uh, I was, I am the co-inventor of the compound that is used now worldwide to, for imaging for Parkinson's disease. So it's, uh, it's not something that is, to me, because I'm, um, uh, working with the Mycology Fox Foundation and, and, and potentially with Dr. Marek, uh, it's something that has been, uh, with me for the past thirty years, and I am really the co-inventor of the compound that is used uh, in Europe, in US, first in US, of course, uh, then in Europe, in Japan, and, uh, other part of the world, so it's something very, uh, dear to my heart, yeah.
Um, I'm gonna move a little bit, um, away from what diseases, um, I do have some now specific questions about the equipment. Um, the United Imaging Pet C T Scanner is mentioned throughout the application and submissions as an improvement in camera technology, um. Uh, can you explain a little more about that specific machine, um, and the, the importance of it?
Roger, Roger and Ken can.
Yeah, um, this is a real step change in technology for the field. We haven't really had a dedicated brain pet scanner for the last twenty years, and this really harnesses some of the latest technology to develop what is a truly exceptional machine. Uh, this, the images that were acquired on this machine were uh, awarded the, the Image of the Year at this year's Society of Nuclear Medicine meeting in Toronto. This involves eight thousand of, uh, of the leading PET image researchers in the world. And the quality is down to two things. One is the ability to look at smaller structures, which is important, but also the dramatic increase in sensitivity, which allows you to have the necessary statistics to image things at that smaller resolution. This also goes with inbuilt motion correction, which other scanners don't have, providing some of the highest quality images that have ever been seen of the brain. This is truly exciting for neurodegenerative research, and the, the Chair of the Scientific Committee at the S M M I meeting said that this was, and I'll use her own words, "A game changer for neurodegenerative research." This, this will allow us, for instance, if we take Parkinson's, to, it will allow us to look at some of the key anatomical structures, so the substantia nigra, which are only, uh, five millimeters across. The, the resolution of other machines, you know, they, they really can't image locations like that with any level of accuracy. So, and this is where alpha sernuclein aggregates in Parkinson's and is gonna be critical to be able to image these structures properly if we want to make, uh, impacts on drug development and treatment for this, uh, devastating disease. In addition, if we look at, uh, Alzheimer's, what's gonna become more important there is the ability to develop better drugs and to be able to treat people earlier in the disease process where more impact can be made. If we look at some of the, the signals that, uh, occur early in the disease, they're in very small structures, something called the rhinal sulcus is where tau deposition first occurs. With such a scanner, one is gonna be able to look really early in the disease uh, and run clinical trials that are really designed to develop far more effective therapies. So this is a real, a real game changer, as other people have said.
Now, can you talk to that as well, um, also the Neuro Explorer cameras, um, are those frequently in use? And what that would also offer to you?
Sorry, I didn't quite catch your question, could you repeat it?
Sure, the same, I have the same question about the Neuro Explorer cameras that you mentioned and that are actually, uh, mentioned by quite a few of the people who wrote support letters. What are those and how will they improve your facility?
Uh, well, I was just talking about the Neuro Explorer.
Oh, okay, okay, so is it built into the, maybe this is, uh, me not understanding, is it built into the scanner? Does it come with it, or are you just buying it and attaching?
It's the scanner itself that produces images. So it's, it's just a huge step change in scanner technology that hasn't been seen before. And the images are exquisite, they truly are.
Okay, um, Ken, do you know are there a lot of them in use right now, or is this a new device to the area?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a new scanner, this has been developed recently with, uh, the first scanner being, uh, I think it was, uh, the first images were acquired last year, sometime in the middle of last year. So there's, there's a real opportunity to get one of, uh, the early machines that are being developed here to really get ahead of some of the, the important questions in imaging research that are gonna demand such a, such a machine in order to answer them.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to ask, um, uh, Attorney Karen Ante for, um, a late file for some, uh, peer-reviewed literature on, um, this, this camera, if you have some that compares the quality of the scans of this equipment to other machines?
Yep, we can do that.
And that would be late file one? Okay, um, sticking with that, uh, what about the spec C T, uh, that would be critical to enrolling new study participants?
So spec C T obviously uses, uh, uh, single photon emitting radionuclides. So certain imaging probes, uh, can only be labeled with spec which necessitates a spec scanner. And there are important imaging studies that require spec agents, so for instance, we've, we've mentioned dopamine transporter imaging. Uh, Gilles is the, the co-inventor of, of that spec, and this is what's particularly important at the moment for, for Parkinson's, for stratifying subjects into trials, for measuring their change longitudinally. So that's a key component, uh, in terms of for what spec is required for. But it goes beyond that as well, in terms of the future. We obviously recognize the importance of the developing areas in, in oncology with radio ligand therapy, and many of those agents require spec imaging to go with them as well.
All right, I'm going to shift gears again, um, with my questioning, um, the next one will go towards, um, it says incompleteness letter, question one, you stated that you entered into discussions with W C G to partner with and run your I R B. Uh, where do these conversations stand?
Miss, Miss Evans will answer that, uh, here, Officer Novy.
So we, we have been in, um, very close communications with a representative of W C G. Um, we have a representative who is assigned to Zing Imaging at this point. Um, so we've established that relationship. We understand the timeframes by which we need to, um, switch over the study that we're talking about that was discussed earlier.
Can I have you move a little further? Yeah, yeah, I, I was only getting, um, your shoulder.
Better, um, sorry about that. Um, so we, we are in, we are in the perfect spot for, uh, submissions. We've, we've registered with W C G so that they're ready and willing to, um, accept our submissions when, um, when the timing is right. So, for instance, um, the study that was discussed at length earlier today, that is being submitted, um, within the timeframe to have, uh, first patient October first.
Okay, I don't want to put words into your, your mouth, but will they be overseeing your I R B?
They, they are the I R B.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, it's, it's Verb Copernicus Group is the W C G, and that is the I R B of record, and that will be the I R B that we use, um, as a standard, uh, regulatory, uh, approvals for studies.
All right, um, please, ex, can you, uh, expand upon why you want to work with W C G and what qualifications they will bring to your research?
W C G has been around for many, many years, but very early on, I've been working in regulatory and operations, um, since two thousand and two. And it used to be Verb, Western I R B, um, Institutional Review Board, um, is what that stands for, and I don't know how familiar you are, but that's a branch indirectly, a branch of the F D A, the U S F D A, where the, um, U S F D A delegates through legislation the oversight of clinical trials. Um, and so W C G is a mix, is, it basically Verb, um, what we used to be called Verb, bought up Copernicus, New England I R B, as happens in many types of industries. Uh, we will be using W C G because it's well-known, it's efficient, it has a good reputation, most industry sponsors use it, um, I M D uses it, meaning the Institute for Neurodegenerative Disorders uses it, and, um, it's, it's kind of the, the standard for, uh, uh, I R B, I R B services in the U S.
Um, are you able to commit that no scan will be performed without a fully documented I R B approval?
Absolutely, there is, that is, uh, written within our S O Ps. Not to mention that it's an absolute requirement of good clinical practices.
Okay, now, um, sorry, I have to go back through my paper notes, uh. Where do you stand on your N R C licensing?
I have, I can take that, or, yeah, I can take that, or you can?
Sure, yes, we submitted our application, uh, for licensure on the thirty-first of May. And we had a free licensure visits, uh, by N R C inspector on the twenty-fifth of July. Uh, that went well, uh, no immediate questions from the inspector. Uh, and she stated that we can expect our license to be received, uh, sometime in September.
Okay, and a follow-up question as well, um, when you are doing your scans, do you intend, um, do you intend to have a physician onsite?
We will.
Have you hired a physician to fulfill that role?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
All right, sorry, I was going back and forth between some earlier written down questions, um. Can you confirm that there will be no charge to individuals scanned? Uh, who would be typically funded?
Absolutely no charge to any subject coming to our place.
Uh, okay, and can you confirm that there are no charges billed any commercial insurer, Medicaid, or Medicare for their, their scans?
Absolutely no charge to any of the people you mentioned.
And who is charged for those scans?
Will be either, since this research, it will be either, uh, money we get from, um, organization like the Mycology Fox Foundation, like N I H, uh, so N I M H, N I A, or a pharmaceutical company that wants to understand better the studies, or by, small biotech, large biotech, that will be where we get our funding.
Um, also, I have a question, um, DNA collection, um, are you collecting any DNA out this facility?
Uh, can, uh, it's. I can join, yes, uh, yes, excuse me. Yes, uh, as part of the P P M I study, we routinely collect, uh, genetic material, including DNA. Uh, and, uh, yes, so that is, um, is, is a standard, of course, is collected, uh, all of the, all of this is collected in a way such that the, uh, uh, research data is, uh, is, does not include, uh, uh, you know, personalized health information, is not, is de-identified. So it's not possible for, uh, with any of the data, uh, to go back to the, uh, and, and to the, um, individual who provided the data.
And who does the applicant share that data with?
Uh, the applicant would be, you know, applicants for this research is for any research, you know, sign an informed consent uh, in the, in the informed consent document. Uh, it, it indicates who might have access to these data. Uh, for the P P M I study, it is, uh, quite broad because, uh, that would include, of course, the study uh, group, the study, the study investigators, study leadership, and, uh, but, and other, other, other members of this large study. But I would just keep in mind, and this is kind of make come, you know, something came up in a, earlier, you know, in a, uh, within, in a comments that were made with regard to China. All of the P P M I data is open source data. That, that, they were very proud of that, it's a, it's a, now, what that means is that, uh, applicant, the participants agree that their data, de-identified data, will be made available to any investigator that agrees to the, uh, requirements of the, uh, of the, uh, data agreement, which essentially means they're gonna use it to a good purpose. Uh, these data have been downloaded twenty-eight million times, uh, across the world, uh, including more than a million times in China. Of course, people have Parkinson's disease and Alzheimer's disease in China and in Africa and in South America. Uh, and we wanna make sure investigators in those locations have access to these data so that we can together, uh, increase the, uh, our ability to do research.
Okay, so the next few questions are going to go towards data safety. So again, I will give Attorney Karen Ante a heads up so he can determine who's the best to answer. Um, please explain how you will store research data.
Sorry, I was talking and I missed the question, Officer.
Okay, please explain how you will store research data. You're, uh.
Uh, yeah, uh, Hearing Officer Novy, I would just like to, um, add one more sentence to, um, Dr. Merrick's comment about the data, when you said applicant, um, what, what we do is we would, uh, share the data as de-identified as, as in the P P M I study. He, he, uh, addressed that, but we would, uh, share the data and transfer the data per the requirements of our sponsor, industry sponsor, or the sponsor of the research, so it may vary, and I just wanted to, um, add that to the, to the answer, thank you.
Let me just, um, maybe re, um, let's go back a question, um, cuz I do have a, a, who would Zing Imaging share data about DNA collection with besides the study that has asked for this data?
No one.
Okay. Would there be a, a time when they would?
No.
Oh.
Okay. All right, so let's now go on to the next question.
If I may, just for clarity of the record, I, I do wanna point out that Jing would have access to identifiable data, it's, it's.
Well, I, I was.
I just wanna make sure, cuz it didn't seem like, that's what they said.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I wanna make sure you understand that.
I, I, I appreciate that, but this is the O H S questioning time, um. I wanna go back to the storage of research data again, at the facility. Um, how will you store research data?
Rebecca?
The data would be, all data are stored, um, and secured for our, our internal procedures. Um, they would be, uh, held in, it, it depends on the, the medium. Um, electronic documents would be stored in secured, um, systems, networks, that network security is paramount, um, if it's paper documents, it's stored, they're, they're stored, um, in secured locked records rooms, uh, for instance, uh, so we, it, the, the process around storing data is is very, very tight, and it's something that we take very seriously. Particularly, as, as, um, stated a moment ago, the site, the clinical site does have. information that's identifiable because we see research participants who are identifiable.
Um, who is responsible for data security for your studies?
For what?
Who's responsible for data security for your studies?
Data security starts with our I, our information technology.
Can you kind of walk me through the path of, uh, you know, after the I R B sets the standards, who follows up?
After the I R B approves the study?
Yeah, like who in your facility would be watching to make sure things are being followed?
Sure, um, first of all, all, all staff are trained on network security and the security of not only the research participants, but the, the staff and other information that comes available um, within the facility. So it starts with training, number one. Um, and that training is provided by the, um, I T group. Also, we have a quality assurance group um, that ensures that we have the right procedures in place to protect individual P H I, personal health information that, um, is stored, uh, research information that's stored. Once there's a study approved, the participant, um, their procedures take place and source documents are completed. Those source, source documents do have personal health information within them, but the information is then transferred to what's called case report forms. Case report forms only have, um, patient identifiers that are completely, um, anonymized so that the research data becomes just that. It, it cannot be, um, it, it, looking at it, it cannot be linked to another, to an individual. And it's only that information that then is transferred, um, per the sponsor requests.
Do, um, study primary investigators own and control the data or does Xing?
The primary investigators, you mean like the, the principal investigators of the study?
Yes.
And the clinic staff have access to P H I because they're seeing the patients or in this case, we don't really refer to them as patients, research participants. Other members of Xing Imaging uh, would not, typically would not. Of course, um, there may be I T might have access, for instance, in trying to help with a system issue, but typically the, what, what happens is that people are delegated to have different roles within the study. And, um, that's by regulation, and only those individuals who are delegated to uh, operate within the study would have access to that information. Uh, all individuals, of course, are trained to, there's something under HIPAA called, uh, inadvertent access, and people, because of that and that, uh, regulation, people are all trained to understand if they uh, somehow inadvertently have access to that information, that that, that they, uh, keep that confidential.
Will Xing have access to all the, the data generated from, from the spec C Ts and the pet C Ts?
Say that again?
Will Xing Imaging have access to all the data generated from the machines that you're looking to acquire?
Not all staff, not the whole company, but the, the, um, nuclear med techs, the, um, P I.
Will the, um, is, is who has access to data laid out in your agreement with the study?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch your question.
Is there, is there like a list given to the study that these people will have access to your data? Like if you're doing a data use agreement?
Yes, actually, in, within the consent, um, it explains who, who, to the participant, the participant through the consenting process, the informed consent process, is told who, and it's stated within the consent who would have access to their information, yes. So it would include the F D A if they were to inspect, includes the sponsor if they were, when they monitor, um, but that's all made known and it's through transparency in that consenting process.
If someone wants access to the research data, what is the process to request access? Someone that wasn't on the original document?
The participant, probably the, the most the most likely thing is that the participant somehow needs the information, not the, not the research information, but information about themselves. They can sign a release, an authorization to release that that information such to their, their primary neurologist, et cetera. But, but we wouldn't be providing, uh, research data at that point. We'd be providing, um, information that they need for their own care because we don't provide healthcare.
What are your safety, um, are your privacy and security protocols for data? And could you submit that as a late file?
I can submit that as a late file. It's quite lengthy. There's quite a few, uh,
We've seen a few.
procedures that we can provide to you.
Okay, well, we'll provide that as late file two. Um, what are, uh, I know were the safety protocols in attachment H, are those your study safety protocols that were provided?